Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 21st, 2018 Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. 7:00 PM Citizens Input. 7:05 Public Hearing Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC Kenny Chesney Concerts. 7:20 Public Hearing NPS LLC Doing Businesses Gillette Stadium Alteration of Premises. 7:35 Patriot Place Whole House Group LLC Doing Businesses Battle Road Brewing Company One Day Wine and Malt License in Discussion. 7:50 Continued Public Hearing NRV Inc. Change of Manager Pledge and Transfer of All Alcohol License. 8:05 Introduction and New Council on Aging Human Services Director. 8:15 Change of Manager VFW Foxborough Post 2626. 8:30 Senator Paul Feeney and Representative Jay Barrows just updating us on happenings in the district. 8:45 A New Liquor License Vote to Approve Updated Language. House Bill 4768 Hops and Grapes Liquor License. 9:00 Board of Acceptance Board of Selectmen Acceptance of Grant for New Fire Truck. 9:05 Discussion NRRC Nippon City Reservoir Update. 9:20 Selectmen's Update. 9:25 Town Managers' Update. 9:30 Assistant Town Managers' Update, and then we have some action items. I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't think I've done it before.
Pledge of Allegiance. "Plead the flag of the United States of America into the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Before we get going on tonight's meeting, I just want to have a moment of silence. Last week, we lost a father of three town employees, Debbie Giardino, Ed Noonan, and Rich Noonan. And Rich, their father, was also a Foxborough Auxiliary Police Officer, so we have a moment Thank you. Little after 7:00, anybody here for Citizens Input? We start the public hearing four minutes early? By the time we read it? Okay.
Your calls.
You want to go ahead?
The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, beginning at 7:05 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, to review the application submitted by NPS LLC Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC for Kenny Chesney Trip Around the Sun Tour. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jesseino for Gillette Stadium.
And Randy Briggs, State Advisory Committee.
Here before you this evening to request the license for the Kenny Chesney Trip Around the Sun Tour, which will be this Friday and Saturday at Gillette Stadium. This will be the 18th and 19th Kenny Chesney Shows at this stadium. He's been coming to the building, as you all know, since 2005. With respect to this license, there really aren't any significant changes from what you saw back in 2017. We built the stage on the exact same CAD drawing, so the layout of the building, the layout of the field are exactly the same as previous years, or as last two years. We anticipate attendance of about 50,000 for Friday, 53 for Saturday. We request a lot opening time of 1:00, but I say that obviously knowing that it's contingent upon the public safety decision of when to open the lots, hold the lots. You know, we defer to both chiefs on that call. So request a lot opening time of 1:00, but it will be ultimately set by public safety officials. The stadium gates will open at 4:00, and the show begins right at 5:00. This is its last stop. It's been out and on tour all summer, so it's nice when all of the kinks have been worked out and you have a good feel for what the crowd looks like and how the show is running. In talking with other venues and just watching the show as it's gone throughout the country, it's run extremely prompt, ended at 10:50. We request an end time of 11:50 to cover, buffer any weather that might roll through or any other delays, but it's been ending really promptly, right at 10:50 across the board. This event, from a public safety standpoint, is complex, it's nuanced. The way we handle this event now is vastly different from the way we handled it a decade ago. We're certainly smarter with how we've evolved, and we work, there's not a day or not a week that goes by where we're not in touch with public safety for one thing or another. I think we're in a good place now where if there are concerns, if there are issues, they're addressed right away. And so going into this, as you saw from the report from the Stadium Advisory Committee, the both chiefs fully support and endorse this event application. It's a craft entertainment production, so we are the in-house promoters, which is nice. We've got control over, complete control over the ticket sales, the event production itself, and we use Uncle Odd Production Services, which we've been using for the last decade plus. We're really looking forward to it. This will actually, Kenny will hit a million tickets sold this weekend at our venue, which is a truly rarefied air for any artist to sell a million tickets in one spot, and certainly for a man from East Tennessee to sell a million tickets in Foxborough is pretty impressive. So we're looking forward to the weekend.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
No, I just, you know, I was fortunate to go last year. It puts on a great show. And much to my wife's chagrin, listened to No Shoes Radio for 15 hours on the stand. On, he's looking forward to coming to Foxborough.
Yeah.
So he's in the Meadowlands first, and then he's coming to Foxborough, and he calls this his home. So Foxborough gets a lot of good publicity on No Shoes Radio, so it should be a great show.
The pre-concert fan festival area, have you guys done that before?
We have, yep. We've done that every year. It's just in Lot 4A, which is right outside the ticket office and pro shop area. It's really mostly a radio station activation, so like the three main radio stations on the market will come down, they'll broadcast live, they'll give away ticket upgrades, they'll pass out, you know, foam cowboy hats and like small trinkets, light koozies, things like that. And then Blue Chair Bay Rum, which is the title sponsor for the event, will have a branded bus set up, and they'll have brand ambassadors taking photos, have good social media activation and opportunity around that space, but there's certainly no pouring or service or sampling of any food or beverage.
With regards to the delayed lot opening, what's the communication to, what's the plan to communicate that so that people aren't rolling up and lots are closed? And, you know, it's obviously different than shows and events at the stadium, so how people know?
Yeah. So it is, it's challenging. We do the standard communication where everybody who has purchased a ticket through Ticketmaster gets a direct communication piece from us. So they'll get, they've already received their first round of communication, and they'll get another one probably first thing Thursday morning. We also work, this is the only show where we actually still work too with radio stations to push announcements out. We obviously are really well-covered with all of our social media platforms, so we'll communicate out to fans too that way. It's really just a call, it's public safety decides whether or not the lots usually should be opened earlier if they feel like pressure on local road rates needs to be relieved. So it's a, it's a decision that's very much made in real time.
Anybody else? Doc, you got anything?
No. Great show.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience have anything? Seeing none, you want to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion to close that? Seeing none, all those in favor closing it?
Aye.
Thanks.
I move to approve Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC application for Kenny Chesney concerts on August 24th and August 25th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, it looks favorable too, right?
It does. It does.
Fingers crossed.
All right, our next one is a public hearing as well. Why don't we knock off the action items? While we're waiting. Phil, we're going to go to the action items.
So Chairman, with respect to the first item, that's actually not needed, as I've referred to Town Council, and by virtue of the position that Amy called, she's an automatic member of the committee of citizens.
Okay, so we don't need to take action on the first one? Okay.
All right, so the next one, reappoint, reappointment of the town boards and committee members with terms expiring June 30th, 2019, and September 8th, 2021.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right, the next one, Historical Commission Acceptance of Gift Donation of $126.23 to the Foxborough Historical Commission from book sales.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Jake and Joe's Approval of Extending Closing Hours on Saturday, October 16th, 6th, sorry, 2018, to 2:00 AM for the McGregor Fight.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, even though they're closing later, the liquor is still under the regular rules and regulations.
Food, food service and liquor, still under the regular.
Shut off at 12:30.
That's what I thought. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yep. So that was the discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Jake and Joe's Approval of Sunday Early Openings of 11:00 AM for New England Patriots Home Games, and those home games are September 9th, September 30th, December 23rd, and December 30th, 2018. Dates may change due to flex schedule.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Splitsville Approval of Early Liquor License Extension Request of 10:00 AM for New England Patriots Sunday Home Games, again September 9th, September 30th, December 23rd, and December 30th, 2018.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And Saga Steakhouse Approval of Early Liquor License Extension Request of 11:00 AM on Sundays during Gillette Stadium Football Season.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is the one, this one doesn't have any dates again, so it's just very ambiguous.
You might want to just state, for the record, that the approval is for the same dates as the others. 9:09, 9:30, 12:23, and 12:30.
All right, so amended with the, so Sundays during Gillette Stadium Football Season, September 9th, September 30th, December 23rd, and December 30th, 2018.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Motion made seconded the amendment. Just to confirm, he's looking for 11:00, not 10:00, right?
Correct.
Okay. Motion made, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's it for action items, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, why don't we, I'll just do Selectmen's update, we'll kind of knock that out. Just want to thank the J.C.'s and everybody else, Fight Department, Police Department, for putting on the night out last week. It was a good turnout. It was a nice added touch having all of the, inviting any of the service groups up there. Fairly well-attended. And also, the picnic tables are in and up there, the new ADA compliant picnic tables, so that's a really, really nice addition to the common. So I want to thank everybody involved in that. I know there was probably some people donating services and stuff like that. And just a final shout-out to, again, to the J.C.'s as they wrap up their concerts on the Common Series, that and the farmer's market. It's just been a nice, nice addition, continued addition. Does anybody else have anything?
Is the farmer's market going to continue beyond August?
Yeah, that's not done this week, it's just the concert.
Yeah.
So the concert series is done, but the...
Yep, I think the farmer's market will go through the fall.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact date.
Well, it wasn't held last week, the game, the traffic.
Right. I think it'll probably continue probably through September.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact date, but I know it's not done.
All right. Why don't we, we can start reading the public hearing now.
All right. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, at 7:20 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass., on an application for an alteration of premises of an annual all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license for NPS LLC Doing Businesses Gillette Stadium, located at One Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass. Manager James J. Nolan. All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much.
Just both state names to the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Stephen Miller, McDermott Quilty and Miller. I have with me Jim Nolan, who's the Chief Operating Officer for NPS Stadium.
Yes.
How are you guys doing tonight?
We're doing great.
Very good yourself?
Thank you. That's the existing. And that's the requested, and that's the existing. That's the existing, and that's the requested. Sure, by all means, thank you. Good evening again. We're requesting an alteration of premises for the license at the stadium. The, Mr. Chairman, do a better job than I do, but quickly. Where, from the plans you have, you can see what the existing license premise is, and we're requesting to add this area, this area, and this area to the existing license premise. This basically is the fenced-in area of the existing stadium right now, so this would cover the existing fenced-in area of the stadium, and this would be an area that currently is parking lot, but the stadium has gotten, I believe, six one-day licenses last year to provide services, alcohol, food and alcohol, in this area, fenced it in, and provided alcohol and food services for six Patriot games, also for the college lacrosse series, and also for the winter.
We've done a similar setup for international soccer through one-day licenses, the NCAA Lacrosse Championships the past two years, and Winter Classic. So, you know, all in, we've kind of operated under this umbrella, I don't know, 15 to 20 times.
So this is an area we've done for those numerous events, and also we've gotten one-day licenses for this area for at least the last three years. None of, there has been no incidents in either of those areas. We've worked closely with the Foxborough Police and the chief on staffing those areas and maintaining public safety in those areas. The demand, particularly for the additional area with the parking lot, is with the advent of train, and with the advent of Uber and Lyft, there are a lot of people that are coming to the stadium that are looking for this type of service. And from our standpoint, the sooner we get people into the, under our control and out of the parking lots, we think it's a much better situation. As you've heard several times, and we're happy to keep repeating the fact that we have a highly-trained staff, a certified staff, we work closely with the chief of police, we have a fully-trained team that's certified for alcohol service and awareness, and we feel that by adding this, these areas, we'd have greater control of the people coming to the stadium that are looking for this type of service. Anything else you want to?
No, I mean, I think that generally covers kind of the purpose behind the alteration of premises.
Is that parking lot, that area they kind of close off in front of the pro shop, or is that?
Yeah, it's right in front, right in front of the pro shop. So it's an area that we activate on Revolution Game Days and Patriot Game Days.
The planters, it's kind of closed?
Yeah, with the planters. You know, so in addition to food service and alcohol service in this location, we have other corporate activations, you know, Dunkin' Donuts handing out culottes. On Patriot Game Days, we have a band, Rock the Plaza Series will be there. So it's kind of an overall fan festival, but the food and the alcohol would be limited to a fenced-in area. And when we operate that, it gets operated in conjunction with the Foxborough Police. So it's something that's discussed at our agency meeting and implemented accordingly.
Will that fence be a permanent fence or a temporary portable type of?
It'll be a temporary portable fence.
We definitely use it for the games, and we don't use it for all the concerts. We use it, it's really Jim's call for which concerts we may use it and may not use it.
Just for the board's sake too, I met with Dan Murphy a couple of weeks ago up there on a rainy Saturday, and walked the whole area and physically talked through everything. The night prior, I talked to Chief Baker and Richard Noonan, just to get their take on this proposal, alcohol in general up there, and both of them, in separate incidences, said they have a great alcohol policy, they have no issues, no concerns, so, you know, by listening to those two tell me that, and then walking it with Dan, and kind of going through it, I'm very comfortable with it. So I don't know if anybody else has questions?
No, I just, you know, knowing, knowing those areas and the fact that, you know, they're coming in on a regular basis for one-day licenses anyway.
Yep.
It all makes sense. Nice and plain.
Doc, you got anything?
Nope.
Any other questions? All right, so this is a public hearing. Anybody from the audience, any questions? Seeing none, close the public hearing?
All right, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made second, and to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. There's no motion. Still leave her?
Yeah, I mean, we need to...
Yeah, move the alteration of premises for NPS Doing Businesses Gillette Stadium.
Second.
As proposed.
As proposed.
As proposed.
Second.
All right, motion made second. Any further discussion?
Under discussion. Where all those other areas are secured and fenced in, I would just like to put a condition that, that when alcohol and food service is provided in that parking lot, that the fencing would be, would be used, just so that, I mean, you're doing it anyway, but let's just put that in the, in the license.
One other thing, under discussion, I know this is pretty much, it's all geared towards like the Bud Light Fan Zone and football. Is this football only, or would this be utilized for concerts, Revolution Games, and all that?
It's a, which specific area? Are we talking about the parking lot?
The parking lot mainly.
I mean, right now, we're only contemplating it during football games and events that we've done in the past, so we're not contemplating using it at concerts. You know, for example, you know, with the Kenny Chesney concert, we wouldn't, we definitely wouldn't operate. You know, if there was a show like Taylor Swift where it made sense in conjunction with something larger, maybe. But again, we, you know, as part of our ordinary process, we're meeting with the chief through the agency meeting. So that's where, if we were going to do it for something unique, it would flow through that process.
Right, okay. Motion made second, and there was some discussion. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's right. That's right. Luck on both heads.
Thank you.
Want to roll right into the next one at 7:35? All right, so we're going to go to the Patriot Place Whole House Group LLC Doing Businesses Battle Road Brewing Company, one-day wine and malt license, you guys all said?
Yes, we have an attorney who's not yet here, but we'll start.
We can wait a few minutes if you want. I just, I saw you guys.
Coming from another hearing, so I think she...
All right.
Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, you just give me the thumbs up. I saw you guys, so I figured we would try to get ahead of things. Why don't we, yeah, yeah, we won't keep you here till 10:00 mark. So next on the agenda is introduction of the new Council on Aging Human Services Director, Mark Craig.
So, good evening, everyone, and I'm very pleased to introduce to you Mark Craig, who is our new Council on Aging slash Human Services Director. Mark comes to us from the community of Randolph, most recently, where he served as the Community Services Director of that facility, which is quite a unique facility that has, that was developed under his leadership during the time that he was involved with the Town of Randolph. And it's a, it's an evolution of a process which we see happening quite often now throughout Council on Aging Services where things have become more intergenerational and becoming more community-wide services. So where we have, Foxborough has sort of introduced the element of human services into our Council on Aging efforts. Over the years, that has remained separate, but as we see the world sort of evolving in this particular field, it's, this is becoming more intermingled. And so what we're looking to do is to gain further, further, I would say, access, I think, for our senior population, which, in case you haven't noticed, is getting younger, but yet, and they want to become more active and more actively involved in the communities. And so what we're finding is that, is that the seniors that, that these facilities are actually good for seniors that, that there's, that want the older population to, that they can, they can hang with, or they can have, be involved with younger generations in terms of programs that are being offered. So I think it's interesting to see how this, what this is kind of sort of evolving as a field, that we have a candidate who's actually been involved in seeing that firsthand, and has been involved in that development. So we're very pleased to bring Mark on board. He will officially be starting the day after Labor Day, in his first day, but today he spent the entire day here in Foxborough, meeting with the staff, meeting with the Council on Aging, meeting with the human services folks, meeting with the, with the Friends of group as well, and meeting with several members of our staff here at Town Hall. So without further ado, I'm pleased to introduce Mark Craig.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mark, how are you?
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, so I, I've spent the last seven years in the town of Randolph overseeing the Recreation Department and Elder Affairs Department until the continued growth of establishing an intergenerational community center with seniors actively participating in a brand-new building. We went from similar spaces that is currently here in Foxborough and sort of built up programs and services over five, six years until we were ready to expand and move on to a, a new, bigger and better building. But, you know, I've spent the day here and got to meet some staff members, got to see where I can see expansion in the future for programs and services, and there's a, there's a, there's a great horizon ahead for, for seniors here in this community. So, thank you for welcoming.
Mark, if you speak a little bit about the things that you saw, you witnessed during the time that you were in, and through the programs that you introduced, what kind of participation levels occurred during the time that you were there? I thought that was fascinating.
Sure, so when I first started, took over the Senior Center in Randolph, we had around 300 seniors actively participating within the course of the year. And within two years, we were up to 500, which was obviously a great impact in a short time. And then over the last two years, in, in development of the intergenerational community center, we actually went from about 500 a year to over 1,500 seniors currently participating in Randolph. That's due to a number of factors, including expanding hours. I mean, the Randolph intergenerational community center is open 110 hours a week, so any senior who's working, 65 years old and working, is not going to be able to get to the Senior Center during a traditional normal workday. So they're able to come Sunday morning, 7:00 AM, walk the track in Randolph, so we're able to expand services that way. Additionally, and I heard it today, in Foxborough, it was the same problem we had in Randolph, where senior guys weren't interested in participating at the Senior Center, senior numbers for men are lower. So one thing I was able to implement was something I borrowed from City of Quincy is a Senior Olympic program, where basically we have a number of seniors participating in a week-long events, activities, get out in the community. We had mile walk, two-mile walk, active events, plus some not-active events like darts and billiards and bowling. And we were able to see a large number, excuse me, a large number of increase after each year of running Senior Olympics. Typically, some wives would drag their husbands to Senior Olympics, they would join, have fun, and then they would join programs later in the Senior Center once the Olympics were over. So I see that kind of activity moving forward here in Foxborough to try and gain new members. I also see outreach to the community. I've already started drafting a kind of a new newsletter here for Foxborough, so even before day one, kind of getting the mind work and figure out what, how we can reach more seniors here in this community.
So good?
Great. Questions?
What's your initial assessment from meeting with everybody today? Are you excited, more excited?
I'm more excited. You know, the, the trepidation of who the new person's coming in, I could sense that when I first got there this morning, including for me, of what kind of adventure am I jumping into? And I wanted to make sure before day one, I got the meet and greets out of the way and kind of had names to faces, so that way, jumping in when I got here officially, a few weeks, ready to go. People seem to love what they do at the Senior Center, which is great. It's a great opportunity to, to build more and bring more. Seems like we have a great group. I got to listen to the chorus groups sing today, I guess a few people sing, so it's a great opportunity.
And you'll be starting right after Labor Day?
Correct, yeah.
Very good.
So, not being part of the interview process or seeing the resume, I happen to know a few people at Randolph Town Hall, so I did some background covert investigation. And I will tell you, they're, they're very disappointed in losing you. So to me, that's a great sign. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And based on what I heard, we're very fortunate to have Mark on board, so.
And on that too, this was my first time sitting in on, on the final interview process. You know, they had screened down a whole bunch, so I was on the panel with Bill, Mary Beth, and Mike for the final three, and all three candidates were, were great. But it's a good process that, you know, we do. So I'm, I'm excited.
We actually had members of the Council on Aging as well to serve, served on the interview process, along with, along with members of the Friends of group. And so it was a pretty well-represented group that met with Mark. And it was interesting to see that the reactions, folks, particularly from the senior population, because what Mark has talked about and what we've talked about is new. It's, it's a new approach to how things are being done, and virtually everyone that listened to that was excited about it, because they, they see it as a, as a way to sort of expand what we currently offer. We don't know what the, the final look will be, but, but I'm, I'm excited about the process of developing that new, new perspective, so, so we're really, really excited to have you aboard.
Sure, and just to give a little perspective, we did 81 applicants, so we did use a pretty, you know, good screening process to narrow that down, and Mark just popped to the top of the pile every time.
Yep. Sounds good.
Any questions of us?
No, I, I'm looking forward to making Foxborough my new, my new community, so thank you, thank you for welcoming.
All right, welcome aboard.
Good luck, appreciate it.
All right.
Yeah, just have a few more papers for you to sign before we'll meet you. You're good to go. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
All right.
Couple of minutes before they're ready for the next one. Do you have a lot to, on yours?
I don't have a lot to report, because I was actually away last week on vacation, so, but I, I just a couple, just a couple of things to, I'm sorry. Cut you right off there, I'm sorry. One thing, just a couple of things to point out is that the, we do have a new newsletter from the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, and you'll see it's out on the, on the front desk that was just came out. This is the first one that came out this past week. And it's a new development of the new business development group that's, that's focused on redeveloping the downtown. One article there, of course, is they, they're talking about the redevelopment of the fire station and the funeral home, and they, they talk about some of the upcoming events and the use of the theater. So it's, I think it's a great piece of information that's going to be shared, and I'm glad to see that this is starting to develop into a good informational piece.
How, how are they planning on getting that out to everybody just here at Town Hall?
They're going to be, I think they have a, a website too that they're, they're working on and trying to get that information out that way.
Facebook page too.
I'm sorry?
Facebook page.
Facebook page as well, right.
Oh, yes.
So it's actually a great way for them to kind of start connecting with the rest of, the rest of the community. One thing that we talked about today was that there is an interest in sort of, in sort of developing and expanding the, the holiday celebration for the, for the downtown during the, during the month of December. And we talked about today about developing some of those plans and expanding those plans involving recreation as well as the, the theater and the, the business group itself. So we're really excited about what that possibility might be. I had some experience in that in my previous position, and that's that was a very small get-together of, you know, turning the tree on at, at the, during the holiday season to probably one of the biggest holiday celebrations I've ever seen in, in a downtown area by the time we left, by the time I was able to leave there. So and it's, it's a very exciting opportunity to see, I see the same evolution coming here too, so I'm really quite, quite pleased to see that. The other, other thing is that we, we have worked on the warrant, and we're going to, we'll talk about that when we get to it later tonight, but we have, we are, we have scaled that back in terms of some, a number of articles, and we'll go through that with you later on tonight. The other thing that was important is that tonight we met with the Capital Planning Committee, and they were able to review the two major items, which was the fire truck purchase as well as the Tabor School project. And both projects were recommended unanimously for, for funding. So I just wanted to report that out, that just occurred earlier tonight about 5:30. So those are the key items that I have for you right now, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Are we going to be talking about the warrant tonight?
Yes, yeah.
See it on the-
It's not on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Actually-
It's under Mary Beth's. It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, okay, it was, that was, that was on there. So I'll get into that with, with, on the Mary Beth's report, because she actually has worked on it as well.
Okay.
So we'll do that, at the warrant discussion, we'll get into that under your report.
Sure.
When we get to it?
Not there yet.
You guys all set? This is the Patriot Place Whole House Group LLC Doing Businesses Battle Road Brewing Company, one-day wine and malt license in discussion. Good evening.
Evening.
Just everybody state your name and position for the record.
I'll, I'll start out, Brian Early with the Craft Crew Patriot Place.
Ashley Hansen with Whole House Group. Kristen Scanlon with Scanlon Law, counsel for the applicant.
And Greg Hill with Whole House Group.
Mr. Chairman, thank you tonight for, for having us come in. Essentially, the applicant is here in regards to administrative approval of the, of one-day licenses for a, a taproom concept at Patriot Place. Currently, there's 99 brewers in the, in the eastern and central Massachusetts, part of Massachusetts. There are 28 brewers in western Mass, all of which are at some point in time going to be developing, or have already developed, a tasting room or taproom concept within their, within their, their business. We have been watching this industry and its growth and its massive growth for over two years, both locally and nationally. I've traveled around the country and looking at, at various concepts, knowing that eventually I wanted to bring this concept to Patriot Place. Brewery tasting rooms are unique in that they promote a gathering experience, unlike a typical restaurant. People are there because they have a kinship with experiencing the great tasting beer and they clearly are in support of the brewer. There are table games, cornhole, large format games that make a tasting room a very much a suitable and a family atmosphere. We have earmarked the former Life is Good space, if you're familiar with that, directly across from the new medical office building and across from the Life is, the Victoria Secret space. It's 3,500 square feet, and it has a unique rustic fit-out, and it's perfect location, we feel, for a small brewery and tasting room. We also love the taproom model because it has a low-intensity alcohol consumption concept. It's simply people wanting to possibly purchase a growler or cans for off-site consumption. It's a very limited food offering. It's an opportunity that we see at Patriot Place for take-in or even delivery from Patriot Place restaurants to the taproom concept. There's also an opportunity for restaurant takeovers, where again, a Patriot Place restaurant partners with the taproom to be the featured food offering for the weekend. Think food trucks without the trucks. And the other piece that's very important is the connection to the community that you see in these operations. They have, they're perfect locations for fundraisers, corporate events, and that's something we really have found in talking with the folks at Battle Road. We started researching local brewers who had either not yet opened a tasting room brewery or were perhaps ready for expansion of an existing concept. We connected with Battle Road Brewery out of Maynard, who's been a brewing, brewing locally since 2012, and opened their main brewery and brew pub back in January of 2017. We love their beer, their concept for fun, their laid-back tasting room concept for the brewery at Patriot Place, and their logo seemed very appropriate for our organization as well as the town of Foxborough, as it's a revolutionary patriot. We have executed a business term sheet for the full microbrewery and taproom that will begin construction in January or February. As I said, we are here tonight for the administrative review of the Battle Road request for 30 one-day licenses so that we can open a pop-up version of the tasting room in this vacant space for the remainder of 2018. We plan to provide this board with a comprehensive presentation of the actual brewery build-out at a later date, as we will eventually be seeking approval from the board of a, of a farmer-brewer manufacturer's license pursuant to Mass GL 138, Section 19D. This is a license that Battle Road already possesses and will not be seeking an existing all-alcohol or beer and wine license from the town. Simply the approval from the board to utilize the brewer's license for the Foxborough facility. Kristen Scanlon, who is here representing the, the applicant, can provide more insight into the 19D license tonight, or we can wait until we return for the review of the, of the actual brewery concept later this year. At this time, I'd like to turn over to Greg Hill, who is the managing partner for Battle Road Brewery.
Thanks for having us here. Brian mentioned Battle Road formed in 2012, and it was really the realization of our head brewer's longtime dream to have his own brewery. We opened our 15-barrel brewery in Maynard a year and a half ago, and have been looking for communities where we feel like a taproom concept would, would not only work, but a community that we feel would embrace it. After a lot of discussions with Brian and his team and people here in Foxborough, we, we would be very excited about being here in this community. We, you know, consider it an obligation in Maynard to be a part of the fabric of the community, and that means supporting pretty much everybody who comes and asks us to do something from a charity perspective. We even, you know, pay for their fireworks for Oktoberfest in, in Maynard. So we, we're excited about the opportunity to be here. We think this is a, a great community, and we think that Patriot Place is, is a great place for this to be.
Anybody on the board have questions?
Yeah. So, you raised your hand. I know, that was rude of me, I apologize. So the 31-day licenses is an interim step?
Yes.
Until you get the, the full build-out and-
Correct.
You, you come forward. Now, on the, the farmer's manufacturer's license, whatever that is, that's transferable? You just have one license and you can use that within, within a community, but it's still, it's still governed by the ABCC?
So there's, there's a three-step process to it essentially, and it starts with applying to the federal TTB for the farmer-brewer's license, because they have one in Maynard. You know, that's more of a plug-and-play situation as far as the application is concerned before a secondary location, which would be located in Foxborough, Patriot Place. Once that TTB license is approved, then we would proceed with that to the ABCC for the state license for the farmer-brewer license, which allows them to manufacture their own product and sell it on-premise for on-premise consumption and for off-premise consumption at retail. The difference, which, you know, I've discussed with several towns dealing with this, as Brian indicated, there's, you know, 100, 100-plus of them in the state now that are becoming really popular in the last few years, and a lot of the questions that you see are how it, how and why it doesn't play into what you are typically used to seeing, which is under Section 12 and Section 15 of Chapter 138 of the Mass General Laws. And because of the section of 138 itself with this falling under 19C, it obvious the need to go under your existing quota system because of what the 19C allows you to do. So once we would receive the state license for the farmer-brewer permit, we would come back in front of the board to request the ability to pour on-premise, but that still falls under the 19C legislation. I did have a positive conversation with Town Council DeLuca about this concept as well, and, and he seems to be all on the same page with what the law mandates and is consistent with what we've looked at, those regulations being, and as far as the, the food concept as well that plays into it, he really thinks that's an opportunity, again, as Brian indicated to, instead of cannibalizing the, the restaurants at Patriot Place, be able to promote those and have a situation where you, you're in a unique situation where you can do the take-in or a restaurant takeover and be able to have those food offerings at Patriot Place at the brewery as well.
So, we have beer and wine licenses available, but that's not, that's not going to be needed?
That's not going to be needed, no.
Okay, thank you.
I guess two questions. One, what does TTB stand for?
The Federal Tax and Trade Bureau. They regulate the, the commercial production and sale of beer with these breweries.
So-
So that, that's the, the process for these particular licenses for the manufacturing piece, to be able to, to manufacture your product, you have to start at the federal level and then go and proceed with the, the state license.
Okay, so, I don't know about the other members of the board, but certainly you're schooling me right now on, on something I've never heard of before, and we certainly have to research it a little bit more.
to research it a little bit more. And I'll just ask this, if you can answer it, certainly, we'll research it. Why wouldn't a beer and wine license suffice? Or, or is it because this other license is so encompassing, it allows you to come into Foxborough?
When these breweries started coming into existence, there was a carve-out that was created under the Mass General laws under chapter 138 specifically for these particular breweries to manufacture their own product, which delineates them from what you're typically used to seeing, which is a restaurant license. The primary use is restaurant, service of food, full-service sit-down restaurant that happens to serve alcohol, whether it's spirits, beer and/or wine. So, the concept in and of itself under the law is different by the primary use of that particular license, which is the manufacturing and production of the beer, to then be able to serve for on-premise consumption. So, that's as part of the 19, section 19 under 138, they carved that out to show how it would be different from your traditional, either on-premise, section 12 restaurant license, or as well your off-premise, section 15 license, where the 19C farmer-brewer license allows you to manufacture it, serve it, and sell it for people to walk away with and consume it off-premise.
And, and it's sort of like a statewide license, but we as a licensing authority have to approve?
The pouring piece.
The pouring piece.
Yes.
There's no license associated with that?
No.
He already has?
It's above, right, it's above and outside your existing quota system, which only applies to the section 12 and section 15 licenses.
Thank you.
And some of these overlap with game days, that's obviously a whole other demographic. Any thoughts there, you know, from what you're used to, given some of those Sundays in December do overlap with the home games?
Demographic meaning?
I mean, from a pure, you know, volume of people possibly coming in, you know, it's a different, it's a different animal.
Yeah.
Your other general Sundays, okay?
You know, I think the concept, if, you know, if you came to Maynard, I think you would, I don't, I don't know if you've been to taprooms or been to breweries, but I think the concept is different than your typical bar concept, where people are really, you know, fans of craft beer and, and fans of the experience. And, you know, as operators, I think we like that because it's not a crazy environment where people are, you know, have a mission to, to consume a lot. So, I, I think we'd fit in on a game day. I, I like that location because it's, it's reasonably sized for us, and it's not going to be a location where, you know, we're going to have an awful lot of people there. So, I, I hope that kind of answers you.
And, you know, there's no servers, so everything has to happen at the bar level, so it's not as, you know, things aren't going to happen as quickly as they typically would at any of the other restaurants in terms of, of service.
I just think when, you know, you can't, and maybe I'm wrong, but you can't buy certain, I don't know if it's just hard alcohol at Trader Joe on game days, but can you walk away with beer from Trader Joe? So, this with the retail location, could you, you know, walk away with retail beer on a game day? Just, is it the same as Trader Joe's or is it different? Just hard alcohol?
For beer, yes, Trader Joe's limited on their, on their spirits, but yes, you could.
You can walk away with it.
But that would be a discussion for really when we come back before the board, because we would, we would not be allowed to sell on these one-day licenses. We have to sell when we're, when we're manufacturing there.
So, that was one of my questions on selling a growler and walking away with it. It's almost like it's a package store type of situation, so under the, that special license, you're allowed to do that?
Yes.
So, under these temporary ones, we won't be, we won't be doing any of that, it'll just be, you'll have.
On-premise consumption.
On-premise consumption, yeah.
If you walk out of Trilliam, you're in an industrial park, you know, parking lot, but if you walk out with a growler at Patriot Place, it's, you know, different.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, when we came back to speak to you, we'd obviously say that it's part of the experience and it's part of, you know, it's kind of the fabric of the industry, is that, you know, you're going there, you're, you're seeing the brewery, you're looking at the tanks, you're meeting the brewer, and then you, you have the opportunity to walk away with, with what you like, so. But we would, we would come back and kind of walk you guys through that and talk more about it.
So, basically then, this is just kind of like a, the trial type of a period to, to work out any kinks, or is this gonna be a definite, this will go there once you do the build-out?
Well, it's, it's definitely going to go there, and there's going to be investment by Battle Road into the, you know, the, the 30-day licenses that's going to, you know, be part of the, of the full build-out. So, they're going to have an investment in this from the get-go.
And the final product is going to be in the same location as the 30 days?
Yeah, yeah.
So, what, walk us through the end of the 30-day license period, how long until you think you'll be up and running and ready?
I, I would think that we would be, you know, I always make a prediction on a project, and then it's a month and a half after the prediction happens, but I would hope it's a three-month build-out at max there, you know? If, if we're moving along in the permitting process and, and you guys say, you know, we like this concept and, and we want it to be here, then we would go ahead and, and have a two-and-a-half to five-barrel system built, and then be ready to install that system in January, late January. You know, the, the, the consumer, the guest, doesn't really want a lot of bells and whistles in these places, like you mentioned Trilliam, or, you know? So, we really like this site because it, it, you know, it's, it's almost fade a little bit, that, you know, it's, it's really styled right for kind of what the Battle Road concept is, and we don't have to do a lot of work in there. So, I would hope that, you know, it's, it's spring, it's March or something when we're able to open up there.
So, your intent then would, at the end of, the last one is December 30th, shut it all down, do the build-out, and then open officially, not, not more 30-day, you know?
Well, I mean, I suppose we'd want to, we'd want to talk about that. I mean, I.
Playoffs or something.
We all assume that the Patriots will go all the way, is that correct?
There'll be two playoffs.
So, I think we'd probably want to theoretically come back before, you know, the board and see, and see what you thought of that concept.
With that, is it a calendar year? You can only apply for 30?
30 a calendar year.
30 in a calendar year.
So, December 30th would be the last.
To add to that too, as far as time, timing for the different level applications, is you have to go in order, so the TTB would come first. And that, from the time of submission, it takes approximately eight to maybe up to 12 weeks to get that approval. And then, once you receive that, then you apply to the state, that can take about five weeks, give or take, and then proceed to you folks for the on-premise pouring license.
Okay, so with, go ahead.
No.
All right, one more. So, with these one days, kind of onto what Leah had mentioned, what do you guys see your staffing level being on non-game days as compared to game days?
Well, we're probably looking at three, three to four bartenders throughout the day. It's an all-encompassing staff, it's really a manager and the bar staff. It's a counter service, similar to what you see at Trilliam. The guest approaches, they get carded, they purchase their beer, and then find a seat to sit down. So, the whole staff is kind of, you know, all hands on deck, so limited, but I'd say I'm thinking probably four or five a day.
And would you increase it for a game day?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's a good point, like, you know, are you carded at the door so you can't even get in, because there's no waitress at your table, you know? Once you walk away with your pours, there's no one kind of ongoing monitoring who's drinking that, so just, it's a different concept, you know, for us. It's all kind of new.
Well, I mean, I think it's similar, when you say ongoing monitoring, you know, there's not a server coming back and carding again later on during, you know? So, that card, that card happens at the point of purchase at the, at the kegs, you know?
So, basically, if you're 18, can you be in there sitting with someone? Like, is it, you're, you have to be 21 to kind of get in, get in the brewery? Just because it's, it's different, you know, it's not, I know people go with their kids, you see plenty of kids and dogs and all that, but, you know, that kind of gap age there, are they allowed in the premises, are they?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, as you mentioned, the concept does, you know, in some, some places, people bring more dogs than they bring kids. But, you know, I, I think, you know, we would want it to be a family experience because it's not a, it's not a hardcore drinking experience, you know? It's really kind of about the beer and about the lifestyle and, and the attitude, so, but, but we certainly, you know, from a hospitality business point of view, you know, everybody's tip-certified that works for us, we, we, we do this and it's what we do, and we would, we'd be very strict on carding, and, and it's important to us too, you know?
Also, we're looking into having some non-alcoholic options too, so the non-drinkers can of course come and enjoy the space.
So, is everybody clear about the fact that a, that a tasting room 19C license concept is basically geared around this concept that it's, it's made by the manufacturer, the seller, of the, of the, of the, of the pour, of the, of the pour itself, and that it's really limited to just what they produce? It's not, you wouldn't go up there and order a Bud Light, it would be, you'd have to order a Battle, Battle Road.
Yeah.
Battle Road beer, and then just, we'd taste it from that perspective, and how many different kinds of beers do you have, do you offer?
Well, we, we're, I mean, currently in Maynard, we probably have 10 different styles on tap.
10 to 12, given time.
10 to 12?
Yeah.
So, that's really all they can serve? They can't serve anything beyond that? It is not, unless it's produced by them, it's a pretty limit. So, it's, it's very similar to a wine tasting experience, where you, you get a little taste of it, you either like it or you don't, you can probably order more if you want, but, but it's really all about the, the experience and see what you like, and if you like it, you'll have to buy more later on.
Right, and we're only offering five and 10 ounce pours as well, you're not getting full pints that you would at a normal bar.
Yeah, I think it's an exciting concept, and people from this area, in my opinion, are driving to Canton and Norwood and, you know, everywhere else to go to these, so it's just, it's different, and there's just.
It really, it's a, you know, it's a destination, you know, and, and in kind of talking a little bit about kind of the town and how you guys see, you know, growth as far as business goes and, and making this a destination more so than it is already, people do travel to breweries, and they really enjoy doing it, and it's one of the reasons that we feel like Patriot Place is a, is a great spot for it.
So, really, just for me to come full circle, so the next, until December, it's, there's no manufacturing, you're just bringing your product, you want 31-day licenses to finish the year, but the ultimate goal is to have a manufacturing smaller tank or two and back.
Yep.
And manufacture there too. And that's when you'll go through the TTB process.
Exactly.
And then come back to you for the, for the pouring.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have a question for Brian. Restaurants are a pretty, pretty tight-knit, tight-knit group.
Yep.
Any feedback from them on, on this concept?
They, they like it because, you know, when we first started talking about it, you know, we've been approached about, for brew pubs quite a bit, and we know there was a question in the town about a brew pub, you know, the licensing for brew pubs. And what I like about this is it's inclusive, it's inclusive for the restaurants. It's not excluding them, and it's not, as Greg said, it's not cannibalizing what's, what's going on there. And, you know, whatever the next restaurant we bring into Patriot Place, we've got to be very careful, we don't want to cannibalize. And this is, is like the holy grail. This is something that provides a very low impact, but can be inclusive of the restaurants throughout, and, and the ones I've talked to have really embraced it, you know, Tabalino.
Chakutary from Tabalino's down.
Absolutely, yeah. Skip Jacks wants to, I mean, everyone wants to do it, so we're looking forward to it.
Because you mentioned that in your presentation, that have a restaurant of the day, bring in food.
Yeah, I mean, you, you see a lot, you know, back to Leah's comment about, you know, Trilliam or Treehouse, you, you know, the food trucks are a big deal, and you hear, everyone hears of food trucks. Well, obviously, I'm, I'm not going to want to have, bring food trucks on to Patriot Place, so we kind of figured a reverse model, and that is, is, you know, having the, the takeover be the restaurants that are already there, or allow for the take-in or, or delivery, because all of them can deliver on-site, and that's, that's another opportunity. And just a comment, I had a nice conversation with Pauline from the Board of Health, and she's very much on board, she's very excited about seeing how this develops. Obviously, she'd want to know about the sanitizing and things, and I've told these folks it's going to be, you know, very scrutinized, but, but she's also very, very excited to see how this works.
Good. Any other questions?
No.
All right, move to approve one day wine and malt licenses for Battle Road Brewing Company as proposed?
Should we say 30?
Yeah, at 30, for 30 as proposed, 30 days?
31 days.
31 day license.
31, sorry.
31.
30 slash.
Motion to approve 31-day wine and malt licenses for Battle Road Brewing Company as proposed.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor?
Excellent.
Forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You don't brew Miller Lite, do you?
No.
We can come up and, is it?
Yeah. This has a cell phone number.
Oh, great.
Okay.
You guys all want?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good luck.
See you guys. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
All right. 7:05, 7:50, the continued public hearing, do you want to?
So, Mr. Chairman, the promoter of this, of this particular license transfer and change and change of manager, et cetera, has indicated that they would like to, I need, they need an additional 30-day extension. What's happening here is that they're purchasing the, the rights to all of this property, and the deal is still being negotiated and worked out, but they think it'll be done within 30 days. So, this is the second extension that they've requested, but as long as it's extended to a specific date, you should be fine. So, the, the specific date for the board's next meeting would be about, month out would be about September, would be September 18th. So, what I, what I would do if the board's accepting of that option is to move that the, that this item be postponed until the date's certain of September 18th.
Continued or postponed?
Continued, continued.
Do you want to make that motion?
Yeah, sure, so move to continue the, the change in license to September 18th, 2018.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
So, Bill, so the present manager's still running the show?
I'm not sure they're actually in business right now. I think, I think the business has actually stopped, is my understanding. So, I'm not 100% sure of that, but I believe that's the case. And so, they were, they're actually, they're working on trying to resolve the, the actual takeover.
So, it's staying under that same name, it looks like it's just?
Yes.
The controlling entity.
Right.
So, that brings up a question that we need you to look into, if the business is no longer running and is closed, how long can they hold that license?
That would be entirely up to the board, I believe, is my understanding correct? Is that?
Yes.
Because, because you could actually call, call a license in it at, at some point, but normally, knowing how these business, these transactions take, take place, it does take sometimes 60, 90 days to, to make it all work out. So, this has been underway for quite some time, from my understanding, it's just they're , they're trying to finalize it.
Although, there's, keep in mind, there's two components, there's the restaurant and the wedding piece, which I imagine functions are going on, so.
Right.
What's happening there?
Yeah, I mean, the, I never, when we opened this and postponed it, I didn't realize that, that the restaurant was closed.
I'm not 100% sure of that, but my, that's, was, that's my understanding.
You just get some clarification from Frank?
Right.
Just on, like, what is going on there? Is there?
Absolutely.
Alcohol services, is it the entire complex, is it just the restaurants?
Restaurant or the weddings, yeah.
Yeah.
And is the old manager of record still running?
Right, are they still running, they're fully operational?
Right, I thought they were, I thought I saw a sign that they were open for Pats games.
Yeah, yeah.
They may very well be, I was under the impression that they, they weren't, but I could be wrong in that.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can.
Just confirm it.
We can, you know, continue it, but if you could definitely reach out to Frank and get some clarification on it.
First thing in the morning.
Okay. So, motion made, there was some discussion, it was seconded, all was in favor continuing it to September 18th?
Aye.
All right. Lauren, are you all good, everybody here for you? Okay, so, do the change of manager, VFW Foxborough Post 2626. Just come up to the table and let us know who you are, state your name.
Angelina Ford.
Lauren Wright, Commander of VFW.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, what brings you here tonight?
We would like to change our bar manager. We had a, our old bar manager, we parted on good ways, she just felt like she'd been there long enough. She wasn't bar manager that long, but she'd been with us for nine years, and she just felt it was time to move on.
And Angelina, you are going to be the new bar manager?
Yes.
Anybody on the board have questions?
I just noticed that you don't have experience, you know, managing, being the, the manager on record before, and, you know, I see you have some experience at Melting Pot, but there's no dates there, just looking for? no dates there, just looking for.
Oh, okay. I worked at the Melting Pot about 10 years ago and I was there for eight years at three locations as management at all of those locations.
Okay. So how have you guys got ready to, I mean, this is a big responsibility without the experience? Any?
Oh, I've been, I just have never been on a liquor license.
Okay.
But I've been responsible before at, I also work for Areas USA at the airport. So I was responsible for all the liquor operations of three restaurants there as well.
Okay.
You all tip certified and all that?
Correct, yes.
Full disclosure, she's also my daughter.
Well, it sounds like you've been there for a little bit then, right? Your name's just going on the way.
Yeah, I've been bartending for over a year there, so.
Okay.
Doc, David, any questions?
Warren's daughter. He'll held to a different standard anyway.
Yeah.
This is true.
Yes. All right. Do you want to make a motion?
All right. Move to approve Foxborough VFW number 2626, change of manager to Angelina Ford.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Thank you very much, folks.
They're moving out pretty good. Do you want to do assistant town managers update?
Sure. Happy to. Just want to give you an update on some of our employment process going forward. You met our new human services director, Mark Craig tonight. Today we extended an offer to a communications manager at the public safety building. It's a non-union position that manages the public safety dispatch operation. Our previous communications manager left to work in another town. So we've made an offer today, we're hoping that the person accepts. We received 210 applications for the position in the building department. Val Green.
Can I ask you a question on the other?
Yeah, sure.
So what happens when we go to the regional dispatch with this communication?
So everybody understands, especially for the non-union people, it's an employee at will. We've, you know, been very clear about that, that, you know, training opportunities will be given equally to all four communities to make themselves good candidates for the regional dispatch, but both Bill and I met with a candidate today and we're very clear about that.
Well, we won't explain that to the candidate and she was aware of that.
She was still very excited to come on board. It's a supervisory experience for her and I think, you know, people are trying to put themselves in good stead to be good candidates for.
Is this an internal or an external?
External.
External candidate.
Yeah. So, yeah, we had about 49 applicants for that, just under 50. And then we received 210 applications for the department administrator in the building department. So Mike and I are working closely with Nick Riccio and we've narrowed that down to about 20 that we're doing, we're going to be doing phone interviews for. And then we hope to narrow that down to about five for face-to-face interviews. Val's leaving in October. We're looking to have about a two-week overlap because it's a highly technical, multifaceted position, so.
She's been there forever, right?
She has and she does a beautiful job. And so to have someone to be able to overlap for a couple of weeks, it's well worth it to encourage that. So we're working on that recruitment. The minute taker for the AdCom, we've posted that position if anyone's interested, that's still open. They're meeting, you know, Wednesday evenings, especially for the fall town meeting and then again for, you know, all through the winter for spring town meeting, so.
Do you know if they have a plan B to take notes if?
One of them usually does it, but it's hard because they like to focus on the issues and participate in the discussion and it's hard to do both. It's hard to take minutes and talk.
I know Matt has done it. I think he did a lot.
Yeah, Matt was great. So Matt had, he was, he's given us a good amount of time, but he was ready to move on from that. So that's still open. We're recruiting police officers right now, both lateral and through the civil service list, so that's been an exciting event. And we just closed today a business analyst position for IT and the library page. So we've got a lot of stuff going on. Mike and I are working together on all of this, which has been really fun. Most exciting to report and, you know, we're really trying to get these in under the wire with the October 1 town meeting coming up, special town meeting. We're trying to roll up some of our contract negotiations. So we're doing a successor agreement with dispatch since their contract expired June 30th and we're not ready for regional dispatch, so we're looking for a one-year successor agreement. And we met today, we're meeting again at the end of the week. We're aggressively trying to pursue an agreement with them, come to an understanding. We're also working closely with the library union. We met last week and we have an all-day meeting scheduled next week, so we're hoping to finalize that. We've made a lot of progress with library as well. If we don't get to the finish line for a special town meeting, it'll be, you know, spring town meeting, but we're trying our best. And the chief is working closely on police negotiation, so we hope to get an update on that as well. So by next week, we should have a really good feel for those three Warren articles for the special town meeting. So that's all I have. I don't know if you wanted to go through the Warren.
Special Warren, town meeting Warren.
Yeah. So we met today with a lot of the group and Amanda has a hard copy to hand out to you. We originally had, we had over 20 articles and after meeting today, we're down to 11. So I think AdCom will be pleased with that.
And these are the ones that we think, and by the way, the ones that we took off are ones that were, by ones that people fully agreed with, taking them off. It wasn't like there was any controversy over that, but the ones that we kept on were ones that were somewhat time sensitive and they really wanted to get done. Now, one of the things that we did do, we found out that had to be, that could be combined is the actual action for the, for the Borough School. It was actually two motions, now it's actually down to one. And that's actually been recommended to us by the, by the SBA, MSBA.
That's number 10 on your list. So you have a list that's stapled. The stuff that we took off or are postponing until May is on the second page. So what you see on the first page, I can quickly go down through the list if you want.
Sure.
So article one is the fire ladder truck purchase. Number two is the acceptance of chapter 137, section one, Acts of 2003, that Mike can probably speak to. It's allowing, when we have public employees who are in military service, paying the difference between their military pay and their base salary. The town has always informally recognized this, but we've never adopted it. So it's a good thing to have on the books. Adding school street to the design review district is number three.
That was something that we talked about during the, during the discussion of the, of the project itself. Fire station, funeral home.
And then some timely housekeeping language, to bring language up to date is the brew pub definition, our planning board is putting forward. They're also putting forward the street acceptance for King Philip Place, which is pretty, that's a pretty self-explanatory one. DBW Roger Hill has proposed that we keep in the existing zone two boundary in the water resource protection district for replacement wells. Number seven is for, we're holding that line item for the police contract, which we remain hopeful that we might have some news on that soon. Number eight is for the library employee contract. Number nine is for the successor agreement for public safety dispatches. And then as Bill mentioned, we combined both a borrowing and a building article that we previously had to be, I guess legal counsel has advised that we can combine those two. That's article 10, warrant number 10. And then canvasser solicitor's bylaw, which we've had a committee set up to discuss language on, that is the police chief and town council have worked closely on that. That's number 11. So right now.
That's been worked on for a couple of town meetings. We brought it, but we weren't ready to bring it forward, but we were able to, we're comfortable with it now. We've not discussed it with the police chief as of today, but I think we're ready to go forward. I think it's in the final form.
Do you share email drafts on that with the chief?
Yes, he's approved it as final as has the town clerk and a few other departments waiting.
Right.
So that's what we have, you know, we've worked hard to try to wean down just the, and prioritize just for the special town meeting because the timeline is short for you to look at and approve and then for AdCom as well. I think AdCom is looking at September 5th to see the majority of these. And unfortunately, your September 4th meeting would have been a great time for you to look at these and react to them, but now you're meeting on September 6th. So it's a little bit cart before the horse. So I think we need to talk about maybe a meeting for some of our executive session stuff like the contracts, if we could maybe get together at a separate time about that.
So, yeah, we need to, so because we want to make sure that you're okay with, if we're at that point, we're shooting to get those things resolved by the end of this month, but that would still give us an opportunity to review it with you and then get it before the AdCom. There's still, there would still be three or four meetings available for the AdCom.
Yeah, we could do a, just an executive session meeting.
Yeah, even if we met before the AdCom meeting on the 5th, you know, we could give you the information far in advance when we have it. You could have a week to look it over and then we could talk and.
We'll figure something out.
Okay, all right. Very good.
So that's what we have for Warren articles. And then Bill can report on CIP, I guess?
Yeah, we just, so we've, we said we just, we just approved both, recommended both projects that were on the, for a purchase, which was the fire truck and then in the, in the Borough School project. So both reported out favorably from the CIP committee.
So when you're talking purchase the fire truck, is that an additional one or the grant that we got?
That's the, that's the one for the grant. So I, thanks for pointing that out. So this is the one where we received an $810,000 grant through the federal government to purchase the new ladder truck. We still need to combine that with some local money, which we had been saving for over a period of time with the ambulance receipt fund. We had close to $1 million set aside for that purchase. Now, now it looks like we're going to need about $250,000 of that. And that money is readily available for us right now.
Okay.
So, and the committee did act favorably in recommending that.
All right. That all you guys have?
That's all we have.
Who's your counterpart there, Senator?
I don't think you have a name, Mr. Chairman.
No? Okay. All right. You want to come up then? In case people at home don't know, please state your name.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Senator Paul Feeney, 182 North Street, Foxborough.
Thanks for coming up, Paul.
Welcome, Senator.
Thanks for having me. I did want to mention Representative Barrows cannot make it tonight. He sends his best. He's covering another event in the district, so busy time of year, we're all over the place, but I'm solo tonight, but he does send his best. As Chairman, members of the board, I just want to mention, I think it's been nine, a little over nine months since I got sworn into the state senate and to say that it's been a whirlwind, I think is an understatement. It's, you know, we dealt with a lot of, a lot of turmoil in the senate this year. We also got a lot done, especially locally, so I just kind of want to take a couple of minutes and hit some of those highlights like you asked me to, Mr. Chairman. But I also just want to start off, if I could take a moment, a personal privilege and thank not only my predecessor, Senator Jim Timmelt, for getting me up to speed on a lot of local issues. He's done yeoman's work in this district for so many years, but also my partner in the legislature, Representative Jay Barrows. We get along famously. There is nobody better in the building when it comes to dealing with local issues. So to try and get up to speed on legislation is one thing. I have a full staff and, you know, we have committee staff and researchers and that kind of comes with the job. Locally is a little bit more difficult than I think with somebody like Rep. Barrows getting us up to speed on stuff. It just, it works well. So, so I did want to mention that, just to take a moment and do that. Quickly, formal sessions ended on July 31st. We were supposed to be done, stashed too early by midnight of July 31st. I think it was perpetually 11:59 until about 2 o'clock in the morning on the next day. We did get a lot done in the kind of flurry of the last couple of days. There are a lot of things that were left on the table as well, so I just want to hit briefly on those. The budget itself, the legislature was late, which I'm sure everybody read, getting it to the governor. We did finally get it to the governor. He sent back his overrides and were able to at least pass a balanced budget before the end of session. This year is about a $42 billion, close to $42 billion state budget, but a 3.2% increase over FY18. Still, I think, you know, even though projections, we've exceeded projections this year, which is different than we've seen the last couple of years in the state, revenue was up. It's a good sign. We're seeing a continued upward trend. Still trying to budget conservatively in both the House and the senate and the administration, you know, with the idea that if we see 2007, 2008 again and we have an economic downturn, that we're able to weather that. So this year there was a significant increase in the stabilization fund, otherwise known as a rainy day fund, leaving a balance after FY19 of a little over $2 billion. So I think that's smart, kind of, you know, in the way that we're handling it. Because of the, the rosy revenue picture this year, we're able to put in some targeted increases, especially into chapter 70, school funding. Special education, which has been a major priority for me and a lot of my colleagues to make sure that we're hitting that benchmark, so that we're actually hitting that circuit breaker of 75%, which has been promised to a lot of the communities. Economic development, significant investment in economic development throughout the Commonwealth. I was proud that we had Secretary Jay Ash came down here for a meeting with folks and we did kind of a walk through the downtown. You know, there's definitely a, there's definitely a will, I think, to do more, especially in communities like Foxborough and throughout my district, the Bristol Norfolk district, to increase economic development. Community compacts and other programs in departments specifically for Foxborough. I want to mention a great victory that we had, you know, small in comparison to the overall state budget, but I think a meaningful investment here in Foxborough for $50,000 that we were successfully able to get earmarked for the town of Foxborough for a generator, emergency generators at both Collin and Centennial Courts. Just on background, so the board knows, and I know most of you probably know the story, it was one of those storms that we lost power for a prolonged period of time. I was heading to Attleboro to go survey some of the damage down there. I pulled over on the side of the road to take a phone call and Chairman Mitchell pulled up on the side of the road. He was bringing coffee over to one of the housing units and he said to me, hey, look, we shouldn't be spending money on anything else until we can get power on for people. And I agreed and he said, let's get to it. Shortly after that, I think this spring, we had a meeting with many of the folks here and the other folks in town. It just happened to coincide with the week that we were doing the senate budget, so we were able to put in a $50,000 earmark for that purpose. Representative Barrows pushed it in the House. The senate took it up. The senate takes up the budget a month later in the House. We got it successfully adopted in the senate. Went over to the conference committee. Both Rep. Barrows and I made sure it survived conference committee. Great victory. And then the governor vetoed it with a slew of other local cuts. But we were able to save the day, I think, in the last couple of days when we were doing the budget to make sure that we were able to impress upon our colleagues the merits of such an expenditure. So we overrode the veto, sent it back to the governor, that's signed, and now we're just waiting for the appropriation. So it is a guaranteed appropriation. You as well, Chris. I think it was, you know, it was something that we heard loud and clear from the town that, look, and it's funny because when I spoke on it in the senate, there was amendment after amendment after amendment from, you know, 40 different senators saying, hey, we're going to do an emergency generator at our town hall or at our senior center or at our public housing. So it's definitely something that we weren't alone in identifying the need, but I'm glad we got that. Process now, we have to get the administration to release that funding, depending on the year. Sometimes it's quicker than others. Rep. Barrows and I sent a letter, or will be sending a letter, I think we just signed onto it now, to the administration, asking them to release the funding and I'm sure I'll be working with you all as well to do the same, just to kind of shake the trees and to get that money appropriated, so. and to get that money appropriated, so.
On that, hold on, can you just start coordinating with whoever needs to know?
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority and so we can get that in place hopefully before the winter.
Yeah, it was actually, actually, I was under the impression it didn't survive, but then, you know, you were able to save it.
I thought the same thing and I told, I told Senator Feeney, it wasn't until I was one of the 3,000th people to watch the Bob Hickey show that he did. I sat there watching it and he said he got it through. I'm like, the last I heard, it was dead.
I thought it was dead and dead on arrival, so.
It was, it was vetoed unfortunately, but, you know, there was a lot of different local items though vetoed and there was a few in my district and throughout the Commonwealth. We were able to override them and get it back and still have a balanced budget, so our colleagues saw the importance of doing it.
So, do you think we will have the money in the next two months or so?
Tough, tough to predict. I'll tell you, in FY18, and obviously this predates my, you know, predates my service in the Senate, we were still fighting for appropriations at the end of this fiscal year, so it was the spring that we were still trying to get checks that were due to towns from last year. So it's always kind of a, you know, you just don't know. It's tough to predict, but, but I think with, you know, with all of us kind of joining together and pushing to make it happen, that we might be able to shake the trees.
I would definitely like to get those generators in before winter time.
Yep.
So whatever we have to do to.
The weekend, we'll coordinate with the.
So knowing that the money is appropriated, can the town front the money to make sure that the generators are, are installed prior to the winter, knowing that it's going to be reimbursed?
We don't, we don't have an appropriation to do that. So we would have to get an appropriation to do that. The only, the only way to do that is just to, is if we, we could, we could front the money, but then we, if, it'd be a charge against our free cash if we, if the money didn't come in. So it would potentially be a liability for us if we didn't, if we paid for it.
Put it on Feeney's house.
Yeah, that's all. That plus $49,000.
I think the first, first order of business is to find out what's, what's it like with, how was the administration open to this concept?
And check with Randy too, to see if there's anything we do, but I would at least get the other balls rolling with, with Chief Hadfield and anybody.
Yeah, it's, it's coordination with the Housing Authority really, for first, first and foremost.
Good, good work.
It would just be a shame to have the, the money appropriated, but we're just sitting on our hands waiting, you know, not knowing when it's going to come, knowing that it's going to come at some point.
Yeah.
And go through a winter and then, you know, eventually a power failure and, you know, right back to square one.
Well, we'll see what can do.
Alright.
Yeah, and we'll continue to keep you updated. You know, we'll have a conversation with the administration, see when they're planning on releasing funds. And obviously this one has a little bit of a, you know, urgency because of the weather, so we'll make that case. Just on some other legislation that I was, I was proud we were able to get done, we did the second iteration of an opioid substance abuse bill this year, something that's been very important to me, a lot of my colleagues, trying to do a weekend to kind of curb the epidemic that we're seeing throughout the Commonwealth. This district is not immune to it. Foxborough's not immune to it. It knows no bounds. It's a deadly problem and we need to do more to address it. I was hoping that we would be able to invest in more treatment facilities because I think that's an ongoing problem here in Massachusetts, long-term treatment facilities, but it really is just kind of a devastating problem. I, I worked with a lot of folks and a lot of workers in my 20 years previous to the, to getting elected to the State Senate and saw some absolute nightmares, terrible horror stories. Pales in comparison to the calls that I get as a State Senator, people looking for help for their loved ones, not able to afford help, wondering how insurance they're going to pay for it, wondering where they're going to send them if there's not a bed that they can get in Massachusetts. So very important, we did this this year, the governor filed a good bill. The House took it up, the Senate took it up with different versions. One of the concerns at the end of the day was that, were we able to kind of bridge the gap on the three different versions and make sure that we got something done? It went right up until the last day of session. The conferees in both chambers were committed to getting it done and we were able to pass it. So it's a good, a good bill. It's going to help. It does a lot by way of the prescription monitoring program, things like that, so that we, you know, every prescription is available electronically, no more paper prescriptions. It allows people to, to only fill, say, half their prescription and pay one co-pay, so they're kind of self-policing. If folks are worried about, you know, they go and they get root canal surgery, they get, you know, a prescription of Percocets for 30 days, they only needed to get through a certain period of time and then they want to go back and get them if they need them. And then the other thing it does is it mandates that insurance actually begins to cover a lot of alternative pain treatments. So folks that have chronic pain, that, that don't want to necessarily take an opiate, you know, could go for chiropractic medicine, could go for acupuncture and other things. So it's a good positive development. I'm glad we got that done. That was a huge, huge priority. We did a municipal police training fund bill, which was very, very important to the chiefs throughout the Commonwealth. It was brought to my attention, I was, I attended a Southeastern Police Chiefs luncheon one day and they said that they've been working to try and get this funding for over 10 years. They did not have a dedicated training fund, dedicated revenue source for training. That's for a training curriculum, for staff and for facilities. I think it was criminal that it hasn't happened yet, so we were able to kind of get enough inertia and momentum. I joined with Senator Sierra, my colleague from down the Cape and championing it through the Senate, to make sure that we got a dedicated funding source. Essentially, if you go out and you rent a car now, there'll be a $2 transaction fee, not per day, but just per transaction that we go to police training. So I want to thank the police chiefs in this district specifically for advocating for it. We heard from everyone of them saying how important this was, so.
So that was, that's actually been tried a couple times. I'm pleased to see that it actually went through. I work with a, with a police chief managers committee in the state and that was, that was probably the number one issue that was important to them was to get money dedicated for training. With all the things that go on these days, it's, you're right, it's criminal that they don't, we don't have a dedicated fund for that, for that level of training.
So that was a, that was a big success. Again, unfortunate that we had to wait so many years until the end of session, but we got it done. The governor signed it and we're on our way. We did the Brave Act this year. Every couple of years, there's a, an omnibus veterans bill that gets filed by Senator Mike Rush from West Roxbury. Senator Rush included, what he does, he takes a lot of the different bills that are filed on behalf of veterans and their families every year, compiles it into kind of a sweeping omnibus bill and then of course, you know, goes through the process and is amended. This year was a good bill. It increases access to arranged services for veterans and their families. One highlight, under this program, veterans who live in municipalities that have opted into the, into the tax write-off program are allowed to provide community service in exchange for a reduction in their property taxes. The amendment removes a previous cap of $1,000 per year on this program and it, it allows the veterans to provide up to 175 hours of their services in a given year, which would be a tax deduction 90%, up to $1,900. So it's a good bill. It does a few other things. I sent it off to our veterans agent when we were debating the bill, just to see if there was anything that should be on my radar screen, but ultimately it was a, it was a good success. Just quickly, we passed a healthy youth bill, which pushes the purchase of tobacco throughout the Commonwealth up to the age of 21. We're seeing a lot of municipalities adopting it as a, as a local ordinance. Finally, we did it throughout Massachusetts, so you won't be able to purchase tobacco until the age of 21. Unfortunately, there were a couple of major bills that we hoped to get done, that I hoped to get done, that just didn't make it across the goal line. One of them was a bill that was known as the FBRC bill, excuse me, the Foundation Budget Review Commission. So if you've heard me talk in the past year, you've heard me kind of rant and rave about the fact that we could be undercutting our public school districts up to $1 to $2 billion per year. That is unsustainable, even in a community like Foxborough that does well. The formula is just not, not up to date. They look at a community's ability to pay and I think our, you know, interpretation of a community's ability to pay is a lot different than when they actually wrote this funding formula. Hasn't been touched since I was 15 years old. When I was a freshman at Don Bosco, was the last time they actually fixed this, this bill. The FBRC bill in the Senate, I co-sponsored it, it was the first thing I co-sponsored when I went up into the Senate this year. We passed it in the Senate. They did something similar to it in the House, it was a little bit watered down, but that's, that's what their members wanted to see. We were hoping that we could get something done, just to kind of get some progress on a, on a funding formula bill. Went up until the last minute of session. I think there was a will between the conferees of both chambers to actually get it done and we ran out of time. So the good news to that, not that you can find a silver, silver lining in this, but going into next session, knock on wood on there again, the, we're not starting from scratch. The discussions have been had. We have two good bills that we can kind of come together and try and get something done specifically for Foxborough. You know, I'm very interested in the China School reimbursement, making sure that we're actually, that we're actually hitting exactly what we need to in Foxborough, so that we're not sending, you know, precious resources outside of the public school district. The second piece of that is the special education funding, which costs are skyrocketing. We want to make sure that the state is meeting its commitment to the municipalities. And then the third piece of that is to really, you know, to look at the funding formula and say, we need to update this every few years so that it matches the reality of what we're facing in the communities. Foxborough related, we have the mandated reporter bill, which I know so many of you have been involved in and others throughout the community. Again, predates my involvement in the Senate. Senator Timmeltie and Representative Barrows were great champions of this bill. Went through a couple of different redrafts over the last couple of years. Made it a little bit, you know, we got, got it a little bit further this session, but then it just kind of died out and wasn't adopted. So that will be a major priority for us going forward into next year, making sure that we file it again and really to sit down with the committee staff and our colleagues to say, what is it, what is it going to take? What do we have to do? You know, we've, we've looked at this bill, we've examined it, there's plenty of co-sponsors, there's a lot of inertia behind this. What do we need to do to get this done? And, and I'm proud that, you know, here in Foxborough, we took a, you know, incredible tragedy to actually have the discussion, but I'm proud that we're forcing the discussion throughout the Commonwealth to get a bill like this moving on the mandated reporters. So we'll continue to do that next year. CSX rail lines, we, we know with, read in the, in the papers and many of you on this board have been involved with some of the issues they have down on Spring and County Streets with the rail yard down on the Mansfield Line. We've heard loud and clear from the neighbors, you know, what's going on. CSX has actually changed their operations so that it's affecting them in a, in a very adverse way in the middle of the night. I think the quote that kind of got me when, when they first came to me with it is, look, we basically have a working train yard, not backyard, and that's something new. It hasn't been like that in the past. Representative Barrows and I have been working with CSX, we've been working with Mastod, we've been working with the administration, Secretary of Transportation Pollock, to try and get some sort of movement down there. There were emergency funds expended to actually build in a second line down there, so not to, I'm not a train expert by any means, but recently in a community meeting, the engineers explained it to us and they said it would essentially allow these trains to queue up further back towards the train yard, so that they're not actually up there blocking the intersection, causing a public safety hazard and, you know, clanking and running their engines in the middle of the night. So that's a, a work in progress, still working that. And then finally, a local bill that came to us from town, from town meeting on a land conveyance for a potential fire substation. We were able to get that done in the last couple of days of session. So if that becomes a reality, then the, the governor has signed that bill, so we're good to go on the land conveyance and at least we took care of that part. Finally, I am available to you all, you know that, 24/7. Everybody should have my cell phone number, but also members of the community. I pride myself on trying to be accessible. I have a standing, standing coffee hour at the senior center at the second Monday of every month at 9:00 AM. Would love to see some new faces come down there and talk about whatever's on your mind. I have office hours throughout the district. This Friday, I'm in Foxborough at 10:00 AM over at the Boyd and Library from 10 to 11. So I encourage anyone that wants to come by, tell me what's on your mind, put stuff on my radar screen, come by and chat about the Patriots, whatever it is, we'd love to see you. Thank you.
So you haven't been doing much in the last nine months?
No, it's been really boring, yeah.
For freshmen, Senator.
I am blessed, I am blessed with this life. I am in the, the best job in the world and, you know, there's such an ability, I have a great staff and there's just an ability to, to really make a difference in the community and especially being from Foxborough, you know, it's, it's, it's important to me to make sure that I'm here and available and accessible.
Mr. Chairman, Senator, just one thing, one, one piece of financial information we'd like you to check on.
Yes.
There was a new tax that was enacted on the, on the benefits.
Yep.
Piece recently that both Randy and I have, have talked about, which we want to, we want to take a look at that because we're not 100% sure of how that works and we want to, but adversely, it could, it could cost us some significant dollars. We're worried about that and the impact of that because we actually already provide leave benefits.
Yep.
For part-time people. This is for, to provide benefits for part-timers that, for communities that don't provide it. And so we're, we're being taxed, double taxed in a sense.
Got it.
And so we need to have a conversation about that and see if we can somehow be given some relief of that if in fact we actually provide those benefits.
Got it. I'll follow up with you on that, but we'll take a look at it.
That'd be great, thank you.
And did you have any, any help in, in the grant through Congressman Kennedy for the fire truck?
So frequently, especially the relationship that Deputy and the chief and I have, I'll hear from them, you know, that they're applying for a grant and, you know, this was a federal, specific federal grant, so they reached out to Congressman Kennedy, were able to get it done. In the past, I've kind of helped, you know, usher through different members of the congressional delegation, but this is all on them. It's all on the, on the department. They've done great work in applying for the grant. We did have Congressman Kennedy actually come down to the firehouse a couple of weeks ago. We, him and I were, were kind of poking around the town and meeting with, with voters and other folks and we wanted to stop at the firehouse so that he could actually go in and, you know, see the operation and see where the truck is going. But, um, yeah, this is, this is great work by them and, and our Congressman.
Excellent. Excellent. Anybody else?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Great job, Senator.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, you as well. Stay busy, huh?
Keep me busy.
Alright, next on the agenda is the liquor license that got approved at the last town meeting. We need to vote as a board to approve it, so do you want to just discuss that a little bit, Bill?
Right, so the, there was language that was, that was amended in the actual bill itself by the House and Senate, so during, during the approval process. And any changes, there's language in the bill itself that said that if any changes were getting made, they had to be approved by the board itself. So I do believe we provided you copies of that, if I'm not mistaken? Yeah, it's actually, it's on your board docs, so the actual changes that are actually contained in the board docs document. But I did review it with our special liquor counsel, alcohol counsel, and he was fine with all the changes that are being proposed. There's one, one piece of information that, that's, that the state has actually changed its position on, and that is the fact that there were, there were a number of bills that included the $5,000 incentive fee that goes with that for, for new legislation, for new liquor licenses over and above the standard quota. The state actually removed that language, but did leave it up to the cities and towns that continue to allow to do that on your own. And it's been our practice to do that and so we, it's not like that we'd be changing our practice and doing, and not doing that, but, but counsel does advise that we actually adopt a, a formal policy that, that includes that language at some point, so we'll come back to you with something on that as well. But for now, we're going to continue on with the practice. I recommend you continue on with the practice anyways.
I would recommend we do as well.
It's important to note that those funds actually.
Serve the economic development.
For the economic development, so.
That's correct.
It's an important.
So they are clearly earmarked for that purpose, so that's a good, it's a good purpose and a good, good purpose for that reason. So, but the, but counsel does recommend that we do it, that none of the changes were, were difficult for, from, or caused any particular problem for the town itself. So we do need a motion from the board to actually, to approve the changes as proposed back from, from the legislature.
Alright. Move to approve the updated language in House Number 4768.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll send it back to the legislature to get those changes approved.
Okay. Next up is Board of Selectmen accept grant for new fire truck. Mike, do you want to come up? I'm assuming that's what you're here for. I'm assuming that's what you're here for.
We were fortunate to be awarded a federal grant for $810,000 for a new ladder truck to replace our 1994 ladder truck. So something that was in the pipeline on a capital improvement plan to replace in the early 2020 area in the neighborhood of, you know, $1.3, $1.4 million. So we're going to, you know, be able to replace that earlier due to the federal grant. We're very fortunate. A great team, very excited, obviously.
Yeah, congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
You and firefighter Pachini?
Tony Pachini.
Yeah. Yeah, we were able to, yeah, and then some other, we were able to leverage some other guys' relationships with people that had been successful in the past and it's a small community in the fire service, so, you know, we were able to pass it through some people that review the grants
Yeah.
...in Washington and they gave us some feedback. So we were very, very fortunate.
Yeah, that's a good-sized grant. Is that the biggest grant the town's ever received?
We've seen a similar one last year for the additional four firefighters. It was in the $800,000 range as well, so, and then money for new radios in the past two years is in addition to that. So we estimated that we've, that the fire department has been successful in about 200, almost $2 million worth of grants in just two years. So it's been, it's been a good, it's been a fruitful process.
I'll give you a job.
So it's been a very good process, so congratulations on that, Mike.
Thank you, yes.
And again, you know, Paul, if you see Congressman Kennedy, pass on our thanks, or Mike, if you talk to him.
Maybe we should probably even draft a letter of thanks.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably a good idea.
That'd be good.
I think once we, we were going to have him come out once the truck was delivered and we did.
Yeah. So when do you think delivery will be? I mean, have you ordered it or?
No, no, we haven't ordered, we're just going through the process now. We're looking at different vendors and trying to really, you know, concentrate on what's going to be the, you know, the most cost-effective and the most, you know, add the most value to our operation.
And this is going to be a ladder truck, you said?
Yes, yes.
So it'll be big enough and designed how everybody went through the Patriot Place stuff?
You may want to actually elaborate on it a little bit more, Mike, because it's not going to be just a ladder truck. We actually, we looked at things a little bit more regionally these days because Plainville and Walpole just recently bought new tower trucks.
So there's different types of aerial devices and aerial apparatus. Yeah, one of them being a, it's known as a tower. It's one of the, it's a large truck and it's got a big basket on the end. So those are kind of popular now, but looking, you know, looking regionally, different applications for different aerial devices. So one of the things, you know, us and our team decided to do was look at, you know, something a little different. So we're going to buy a truck that's kind of different than all of our neighbors. Nobody really has the type of truck we're looking to buy. Our ladder trucks are actually going to have a small pump on it too, so it has the ability to put out a fire. It's going to carry five hundred gallons of water. So in the scheme of things, you know, it's a relatively small investment overall to add those features to the truck, to make it multi-dimensional. The ladder truck we have is just that. It's just a ladder truck. It really doesn't have any other function other than to carry that big ladder, it doesn't have any water or anything. So this truck will be more versatile and more efficient for the future. But it's also going to be, you know, a little unique in the area because no one else really has one like it. So, you know, it fits in regionally so we can kind of still, you know, serve other communities. We can use other communities' resources and vice versa. It's very rare that we have a fire and not have one of our community partners like Walpole, Mansfield, or Sharon coming in to help us out and we obviously go and help them out quite a bit. So we work with Mansfield on almost a daily basis between the highways and sharing ambulances and whatnot, so
Yeah.
It's very, it's already very regional. We just have different names on our truck, but we work together all the time.
Yeah. Any other questions? So we need to make a motion to approve.
It should be a motion to accept the grant on the exact amount, Mike, is?
Eight hundred and
Nine thousand, eight hundred and nine thousand, four sixty-two?
Yeah, it's eight hundred and nine thousand, five hundred twenty-four.
Five twenty-four.
Okay. So move to accept a grant for $809,524 for a new fire truck.
From the, from the federal
FEMA, Federal Emergency Management
FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Administration.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Again.
Thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nice job, Mike.
All right. Next up, NRRC Nippon's Reservoir Update. You guys want to come on up?
Rick, do we know if Paul's coming?
He's going to try. He had the pair of Plymouth at eight in a town meeting, so he wasn't sure if he'd make it here in time.
Is that critical to this?
Well, I think that's what the whole meeting was all about.
Wow.
But, but we have a backup plan as a committee.
Because we have nothing left on our agenda.
No, I know. Well, this was it. So bottom line, we were looking maybe to get Paul here, the LSP, to talk a little bit about what he's done in the past, just to bring us up to date on what NRCC and Paul has done in the past. As Rick just told me, Paul at another meeting, for some reason, he thought Plymouth was more important than Foxborough, so
Sorry.
It was booked ahead. But we sort of have a backup plan and, you know, I'm going to let Kathy talk a little bit about, you know, one of the things we had talked about is maybe reaching out to Schneider Electric and talking to them about what's going on too and sort of sidetracking everything that's going on. Kathy's done a great job and really championed us working in conjunction with Schneider, to come up with a, maybe a plan that benefits everyone and just as a backup
Is there a way to hook into the PowerPoint?
I'm sure, I'm sure there is.
Try.
Is there a PowerPoint?
So Kathy has
Tracy.
Tracy.
Cindy.
Oh, I thought Cindy.
You know, I've got Paul worse.
She's, I'm sorry, it's Cindy. I don't know why I came up with Kathy. Cindy has championed working with them and she's come up with a 15-minute PowerPoint presentation that she's pared down to 10 minutes.
That was ugly.
That I think, you know, in the next 10 minutes might be worth us listening to and with the thought that maybe we can
I guess not.
Champion working with Schneider going forward.
All right.
It doesn't look like it's, there's no connection.
All right. All right, you won't see beautiful artwork. You won't see beautiful artwork because
Yeah, it doesn't connect, unfortunately.
All right.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's all right. I'm just going to, we'll chat for 10 minutes here. Okay, so basically what we, what we want to do is we've been putting our thoughts together based on what we think is a win-win solution for everybody involved. We are ready to, at some point, talk to you with a format that is, it's in the corporate world known as an influential presentation and it's done in a fashion where we can talk to executives in the corporate world from a proposal development perspective. So you will see that we can forward that V5, version five.
Yeah, I'll forward it to the board members so they can take a look at the PowerPoint.
That'd be terrific. That'd be terrific. Thank you. In general, what we are proposing is that the heavy metals and the phosphates in the reservoir be cleaned and that Schneider Electric, the Town of Foxborough, and the Nippon's Reservoir Committee can create and add a success story to what we've already done really well in our own organizations. So the story would be based on ethics and responsibility and these messages are sprinkled, coincidentally, through the Schneider Electric website, which is great. When you look at the combined expertise of all of us, it's really quite amazing. So if you look at Schneider Electric, for example, they are a global specialist in energy management and automation and they receive numerous awards and recognition. Prestigious organizations have showered awards on them regarding sustainability, ethics, including the Ethisphere Institute, Forbes, and also Carbon 200. The Town of Foxborough, home of the Nippon's Reservoir and the globally recognized venue, Gillette Stadium. And then us, we are the Nippon's Reservoir Committee, otherwise known as the NRRC. And I want to just go over what our skills are. We have 109 years collectively. I'm going to say a plus there because we did just recently add somebody, another expert to our team that we're thrilled, who we're thrilled to have. And I just want to read off what we do offer, what we do bring to the table. Hydrogeology, Fortune 500 Global Compliance Learning with a Specialization in Consent Agreements, Limnology, Town Conservation Land Management, Water Quality Management, Toxic Metals Research, Water Supply and Distribution, Fortune 500 Global Marketing, and Risk Management. So what we are proposing, we want to seize this opportunity. It would allow us to, all these, the three organizations to come together and build a safer community. So the beauty of all of this is we would be able to use messaging that's directly coming from the Schneider Electric site. So, and when you see this presentation, you'll see quotes that have actually come out of the site that we could actually leverage as we move forward. We do need to all understand what the consequences are if we don't, here's the influential piece, okay? If we don't do this, all right? The metals will always be there. They're not going anywhere. They're there forever. And if we don't do anything, we will be exposed to certain risks. We did list a few. Human, animal, and plant exposure to the cadmium from manual handling diet and air inhalation causes a lot of problems with lungs. Bioaccumulation, the cadmium in the sediment is picked up by the plants, which is picked up by fish, which is picked up by invertebrates, which is picked up by vertebrates, the whole system is involved. Boats, the watercraft does stir up the sediment, does stir up the heavy metals, something we need to think about, as well as natural disasters, okay? So we've listed a few. That does, you know, hurricanes, they're moving farther north, according to experts. Floods, according to the Schneider Electric site, they're up fourfold in the past 20 years. Earthquakes, we just had one, I don't know how many of you saw that, on June 25th. An earthquake, the epicenter was .62 miles southwest of beautiful Norfolk. So we do have those. And then another thing to consider is drought. We just recently, a couple of newer members of the team just recently found out from one of our other experts on our board, that heavy metals can go airborne if there's drought, if the water level is dry. And then that includes also dam failure. So that would mean a lower water, you know, level, meaning more airborne. And then finally, negative publicity. There's a whole body of research and then companies, organizations do analyses of large corporations that are known for sustainability and corporate social responsibility. And so I did find something that was relevant to what we're looking at. A few years ago, if you looked at the top companies, top-rated companies that were known for corporate social responsibility, it was BMW, Sony, Disney, and Dahmler. They, there was an average spend, corporate spend, annual of $102.6 million on publicity, so they could be ranked at the top because this does impact return on investment. The benefits, we do believe there are major benefits here. We would have a story to tell, success story to tell. It would be focused on public health and safety. We would move the risks. The heavy metal and phosphate-related activities would no longer be needed. And so we could focus on a healthy, thriving resource rather than what we're doing now. Downstream would be positively impacted because we need to think about how the reservoir is set up. It's the head water source to the Nippon's River, going all the way down to the Dorchester Bay and into the harbor. So this is something that would have a major impact on the area. There would be a bond that would be strengthened with anybody who's environmentally minded, customers, partners, and our residents. And then finally, it would continue the positive publicity, trust in sustainability products and services that are offered, and an overall return on investment. The data is on our side, we have the evidence. We do need to all understand what's going on with the cadmium, okay? Just to be clear, there are high levels present and the highest cadmium is in the top one to two inches of the sediment, okay? If we don't want to think about anything, we need to understand those two, those two items. There was a global advertising company that did research, asking the public what they thought about brands and all of this and what we're talking about here. Two-thirds of the survey, two-thirds of the public who responded, want their favorite brands to help local communities and 68% think that businesses are just as responsible as government. Government went to drive social positive change. Schneider Electric has done a really fantastic job actually on their site in pulling statistics together regarding a lot of this. Harvard Business Review, number of resources that have been fantastic. 86% of customers more likely to trust organizations that report their corporate social responsibility results. And forward-looking companies do outperform in their sector. That is, it's all over the research. In summary, we want to combine all the expertise that we have and we want to clean up the reservoir and we will be able to create a success story that will help all of us. Schneider Electric will gain more recognition in business. The town and the Nippon's Reservoir Committee will be able to promote a new, a healthy water resource to the community. What we do recommend for next steps is that we present our proposal to the Schneider Electric North America headquarters, the senior executives there, they're in Andover, okay? We do recommend that would be immediate. And then at that time, we could also discuss any cleanup options and how we may want to transform something that they have, that they offer as a service on their site. It's called a Sustainability Reporting and Business Growth Model. It's eight steps and we may want to figure out how to transform that into something that could be a roadmap and for the projects of anything that we'll be doing in the upcoming months. So just want to thank you for your time and listening to what we have to offer and we're excited and ready to go whenever everybody else is. How's that without artwork?
So my thought is, I just got on the way here, your V5 update. So I'll send it to you, Bill. I thought I'd send it to the board, but I can't send it to the board. I'll send it to you to disseminate to the board so you can get the PowerPoint presentation and review it all. The one thing that, you know, I forgot to mention, you know, right off from the start was the fact that the public comment period, thanks to Town Council and a wonderful letter she wrote, was extended to November 2nd.
Correct. And if I could also add, the DEP has recently, a few months ago, hired a general counsel who's now stationed in the Southeast Regional Office, and he called me, Andrew Fowler, and offered to meet with us and he gave me some specific dates. They're all next week and that might be a little bit too soon, but the board also wants to have a meeting with Schneider, so you might want to consider having the meeting with DEP. I can give you the dates if the board wants to make a decision tonight as to who would go, town manager, you know, less than a quorum of the board, or you could all go as long as you post it. But it might be helpful to go to listen to the comments from DEP about their understanding of how the whole public meeting process has gone. I did explain in the letter, as you saw, that we were dissatisfied, the town was dissatisfied, NRRC was dissatisfied with the way they held the public meetings because it really wasn't a meeting, and I did discuss that with the general counsel. So he wants to meet with the board. He said we could extend the invitation to the NRRC as well, which I did, copied Rick Lewis on the emails. So we can either get back to them and say, "Yes, we'll meet with you now," and then, and I did tell them we wanted to meet with Schneider as well. Then we could meet with Schneider, however you want to do it. Or we could propose a date to meet with DEP that's later, once we've had a chance to look at the LSP's report and/or meet with Schneider. There's a number of ways that it could be done.
Why don't we try to work, any of the dates, early September, like our September 6 meeting?
They only gave me dates for next week, the 27th, 28th, or 31st. That's Monday, Tuesday, or Friday. But again, going back to them, without an LSP, without, you know, we all have, you know, different experiences, but I can't say that I am an expert on, you know, cadmium or, you know, what the right or next steps are. So, you know, us going to meet with them without an LSP or someone, you know, who really understands all this, I think that's
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not an LSP.
No, no.
But I have worked in the state for 40 years, so
I don't know what we'd do without you.
But, well, somebody else would do it, I'm sure.
So if I could just add, so the meeting with Schneider is something the board could consider scheduling. You may want to have the LSP's report prior to that as well. One of the things we did discuss at the last meeting, and I've talked a little bit with Rick Lewis about, is they're using Paul McManus. The board could be a part of that or could simply just review their LSP's report if they're willing to share it with the board and use that to get your background information on what comments you want to provide to DEP.
So did you guys get the report back yet from him?
No, we have not.
Okay.
We're, we've given him authorization to go through the reports that Schneider Electric's consultant, Woodward and Kern, have produced for the last five years and then also the permanent solution recommendation that they generated from that. Because they sort of, if you've looked at that report, it's like an executive summary. They picked and chose
They picked and chose what they wanted to show from the earlier years of study. And so he's, he has begun that process, but we have not gotten anything back from him yet.
When do you anticipate getting something final from him?
I have not put the screws to him to really find that out, or to get an answer on that. So I would think probably another week or so.
Okay. I'd put the screws to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to get it moving, because I mean, it'll, we kind of need to see that and kind of strategically plan the next step, I think.
Because really, without the extension, we're only talking two weeks away from where the original end date was.
Correct.
So I think let's put the screws to him and not, you know, rely on the fact that, you know, we have two extra months.
Yes.
We potentially get a lot of work to do in the next two months.
Yeah, and this should not all fall on him in way of, the, the timing, we had been talking with another company called ESS, they're the engineering company that we're working with to do the boat launch and, and another project on another part of the reservoir. And they basically backed out of it, that they, they were not, they could not commit to getting anything to us on the, on this issue. They're, they're proceeding and, and working with us on the other work up on, you know, with the, it's, it's a...
Boat launch.
Boat launch and sediments control, water runoff control system up there. So that's, that's still in the works, but they, they said they'd help out if we wanted to do dredging, but they're not in a position to help us on, on the LSP support. So that kind of delayed us in, in getting this squared away.
So I would say let's try to put the screws, or put a little bit of pressure, just to, you know, sooner the better.
Maybe he could be at the September 6 meeting? I mean, that's a little over two weeks.
Yes, he did say he's available then.
All right, that'd be great.
And, and he just had a prior commitment to be at another board meeting tonight in Plymouth. So that was, he was scheduled to be on their docket at 8 o'clock, and...
He's not going to make it.
Not going to make it.
Well, let's make sure he's on the 6th. Would we be putting the cart before the horse if we met with the attorney next week without listening to the LSP? Or you think we should wait till meet with...
The DEP attorney?
After the 6th?
I think it makes sense to get the LSP's information before you meet with DEP. I've had a lot of communications with the DEP general counsel, and I told him that you were meeting tonight, and I said I'd get back to him on dates. I did say that we, we do want to meet, and I thanked him for the offer. But I also explained to him that we had a lot of other things we needed to do to get up to speed. I also haven't talked with Paul McManus yet. I do know him, we sit on the board of the Mass Association of Conservation Commissions together. He was concerned that there would be a conflict if he represented the Board of Selectment as well. And I, I told him that they're, just by email so far, I said there's no conflict, but the board doesn't even necessarily need to engage you, I explained to Paul, because they've already engaged him, and the board could just be another party that's reviewing the report, not directing Paul what to do. And if that changes, we can make changes at, at the appropriate time.
All right, so I guess a little bit of a game plan would be, get Paul here Thursday the 6th.
Okay.
It's a little bit of a change of venue because of state elections on Tuesday the 4th. And then maybe after we listen to him, I'll meet with the attorney for the DEP, I think, even if it's just a couple of representatives, unless the whole board wants to go.
It would probably be several people from DEP, whatever, the analyst that's been working on the project, I'm not sure who else they would have. Is the board going to consider meeting with Schneider at some point before meeting with DEP, or is that something you would do later? Or not at all?
My thoughts later, I, I don't, I think we should meet with them, I don't think it should be not at all, but maybe towards the end of September. Get these other ducks in a row. Be interesting to hear what DEP has to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially, you know, the NRRC, hear what they have to say.
With your committee, have you, you guys had any interaction with Schneider at all over the last two, three, four, five, six months?
No, no, only email correspondence, going back and forth regarding reports, that's all.
Okay.
And that's just with their counsel, that, that gentleman?
With their counsel and with their LSP. So Woodward and Kern is, I've known them and the people there for a long time, so we correspond, if there's something coming up, or I can usually just can contact them and ask them what's coming up, or Paul or Kern, also, the attorney for Schneider, has been pretty good about getting back to us if we've gotten an inquiry.
I do think, I think we need to get the LSP and see it, and probably from there decide how we approach Schneider and in what fashion, and what, you know, kind of shape that meeting a little bit with more knowledge on our side. Okay, anybody else on the board have any of them?
Good, sounds like a plan. We'll get Paul in here for the 6th, then soon after that, see about making arrangements to meet with the attorney.
I think, did one thing get sent across, a report from 2002? I did forward a report, there was a Blue Ribbon Committee that was formed back in 2002 by the state, that was endorsed by Schneider and, and worked with the town, and they, they did a rev, a whole review of the lake problems, mostly focusing, or actually mostly focusing on the phosphorus levels and nutrient problems within the reservoir. And that's how the, the whole issue of what I call bifurcating the problem in way of the heavy metals problem was separated to go through the state process, while the nutrient problem, Schneider donated money to the town, which then created the NRRC to manage that funding, to manage the lake nutrient levels and plant growth and, you know, watershed management. And that was sent across, but they had a whole list of things that they thought that should be done to better manage the reservoir and watershed studies and things like that. And one of the things that was listed on that was maintenance dredging, was listed as one of the, the key items in the scope of work of what our committee should be responsible for going forward. The, so that's why I sent that across, was to make sure that everybody knows, or remind people, that that was on the books or on, in the plan, and that, that from that plan is where they came up with the $2.5 million that they funded, was, you know, a million of that dollars were supposed to go towards dredging. A million dollars worth of dredging, it would do a lot of dredging, but not of heavy metal contaminated sediment, because the engineering and treatment and so forth that would have to go into it to deal with the heavy metals complicates things, and complicates what could be done with the sediments, and how they're going to have to be disposed of, and the water treated, and, and there's going to be a much larger engineering program that would be required. So, so yes, money was applied, yes, they said that it had to be done, but there's, there's a big gap between where we are today and what we'd have to spend to do dredging for maintenance purposes, to, to get deeper areas so that we don't have shallow areas of weed maintenance constantly. So just wanted to make that...
That came up during the meeting, right?
Well, that came up...
It came up, and it was, from what I recall, it was, it wasn't going to get us to the final state, so it was kind of...
No, there was a, they evaluated, in their, what they call their Phase 3 analysis, they evaluated dredging of all areas that had cadmium to take it out. And the question was that they were unsure whether or not they could get it down, from the high levels that it's currently at, down to acceptable regulatory levels, because they're, they're way, way above statutory limits in the sediments. And so because of that, the feeling that it was not a certainty that they could actually achieve it, they said they didn't want to try it.
So the Blue Ribbon recommendation is different than that Phase 3 evaluation?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The Blue Ribbon was focused on to keep things usable as a reservoir for boating purposes, for fishing, for things like that, which would be maintenance dredging, which is limited dredging, not, not reservoir-wide dredging, but channels, doing channels and, and specific areas that have high boat usage, so that it's deep enough for boating, and so that things don't just fill in and become swamps. So, I mean, the life cycle of any lake goes from, you know, clean to weedy to swampy to no more, and unless you do some type of maintenance dredging or to, you know, keep it going. And particularly this one, which is a man-made reservoir, it's very shallow to begin with. The average depth's only four feet. So that's why it would be a healthy thing for us to be able to cut channels into certain areas, to deepen it, so that we're not having to do weed treatments and, you know, we're spending, you know, $40,000 to $60,000 a year on weed treatments out there every year, just to try to keep, you know, some usage going out there. But anyhow, I just wanted to make you aware, this, this goes back to why we were created, our group was created, but they did not include that analysis in their final evaluation. And they said, oh, well, you know, you're not going to be dredging, and we're like, what do you mean? You told us that our, part of our charter was the dredge, you know, how can you leave that out of the risk analysis? And they want to leave it out of the risk analysis because there would be a risk associated with doing it. So that's, that's really how things shaped up. Is it too late to meet Paul McManus?
He made it all the way here, we got to...
Yeah.
We didn't think he'd make it from Plymouth.
Well, I apologize, trying to squeeze two, two, two things in the same night. I'm Paul McManus from Appleton.
Paul, you may want to use that, that podium there, if you wouldn't mind.
I'll do it. I'm Paul McManus from EcoTech. I don't know what Rick has told you about me. I'm a license site professional, I'm also a professional wetland scientist. I kind of combine those two things primarily to do ecological risk assessment. So I was involved with NRCC a little while back, and some involvement in this project, worked on a variety of ecological risk assessment projects. Rick's gave me some of the, the recent materials that I've just been reading through in the past couple days, trying to get kind of caught up to speed with, with some of the things and, that have been, been submitted, the draft Permanent Solution Statement in particular, as well as some other background materials that I, that I hadn't seen yet. So if I can add value to the committee, to the town, I'm happy to do so. I don't know what else I can tell you at this point.
They're going to ask you when, when you're going to have your summary of what you've seen. I didn't ask you when you're going to do that. Puts you off the spot here.
Just a little. Well, I guess I'll turn around a little bit, is, do you have a particular, particular deadline you're, you're working to, you know, where, where...
Next Monday's fine.
So at one point, the end of public comment was going to be September 4th.
Right.
As part of the original final draft letter that we got. Through our town council, we were able to extend that, and we've sort of taken a grave interest, once we read that final solution of what Schneider wanted to do, and sort of, we don't know where, we as a town, that's going to leave us. So we've got a lot of catching up to do as, as a board, to try to come to grips with what that means and what we have to do going forward. So that, that, your response to their final draft, final solution, kind of be important to us moving on.
Okay.
The other thing in the timeline is that the town has reached out to both the DEP and wants to reach out to Schneider. They have meetings with both of them prior to our, this middle deadline. And so, you know, getting your information or your feedback will lead as to what we should be saying to them as we meet with them going forward.
Okay. So I guess, I guess, you know, as I've been reading the materials and thinking about this and talking to Rick, I, I guess, I guess my, my real question is, you know, what, what are you, what are you looking to, what are you looking for me to help you do? And help you, is it, is it a case of, of understanding, you know, as, as this gentleman said, kind of understanding the implications to the town? Is it understanding kind of how they, how Woodward and Kern got there, got to their conclusion, where there might be, in, in my view, some weaknesses in that assessment? What, what really, what, what really are you looking, looking for?
Paul.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think from our standpoint is, you know, it's, it's termed the Permanent Solution. What they're proposing is not a permanent solution from, from where the town sits.
Okay.
Okay? And we want to, we want to partner, as a best-case scenario, with, with the stakeholders, okay? Schneider Electric being, being one of them, and, and come up with a, a true permanent solution that's acceptable to everybody. So your, your feedback is, is really vital to that.
Okay.
And not only that, we're hearing, you know, that there's a lot of misinformation out there, information that's not being included in the permanent solution, with feedback that the NRRC has given them over the years. We just heard from Rick that, you know, 2002, there was a Blue Ribbon Panel that, that suggested dredging, you know, that seems like, that seems like more of a permanent solution than, than anything that, you know, that statement said. And, yeah, so, you know, the more information we have, the better we'll be prepared going to Schneider and going to the DEP and meeting with them too.
Okay. All right, I expect, you know, because the, the scope is somewhat broad and undefined, that there may be some, a couple iterations perhaps to what I put together. So I don't need an answer for this right now, but I would suggest to the board that, that you think about how that might work, in terms, logistically, perhaps, you know, through your, through your council. I don't know, I'm just, just trying to think of this fluidly, in terms of logistics, because I can, I can envision that, you know, I might give you something that says, okay, well, Paul, this is, this is great, this is interesting, but, you know, we'd like you to pursue this or, or, or that. So I guess I would ask you to think about that, as I, you know, kind of, kind of delve into, into putting pen to paper for you, how that, how that might work.
Well, one thing, just a, a little more direction, and then I do agree with you, we all have to kind of get together. But this is a public comment period for the permanent solution. I don't think we want to try to, in between now and, and that new date, figure out the best-case scenario to get this completely done, but we do need to provide public comments on what they just provided as the, the permanent solution. So I don't want to confuse the two things.
No, I, I would certainly not, 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 in any way be proposing, you know, a solution, or the, you know, a solution, the solution. I mean, that's not, that's not the job of anyone in this room, really. You know, I, I view the job of the people in this room as, you know, looking at that, at that PSS with a, with a critical eye, with the eye of, of the town, and, and evaluating that, you know, does this really meet the MCP criteria for a permanent solution? And I've heard a couple of opinions on that already. And, you know, if, if, if there are, if there is a basis for, you know, for, for concluding that it doesn't, to, you know, to put on the table with DEP, then, then you're looking, you're looking for me to help you... you make that case. That's my understanding.
Right. So, it stays open? And it's not a permanent solution?
Right.
So, it's still a work in progress?
Right.
Correct.
Right. And I assume you understand that, you know, it's up until now, well, it still is technically today, in a temporary solution. And, you know, that's, under the MCP, the site can stay in a temporary solution indefinitely. You know, they're supposed to have, you know, positive steps forward during that process, which they, you know, ostensibly claim to have been undertaking, but, you know, they're not, they're not as positive, I'm sure, as the people here would have liked to have seen.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I think one of the things that comes to mind is that, as I listen to all the discussion here, which is like really, really helpful, is what is the most viable solution to get to a point where the reservoir and the residents who live in the immediate area of the reservoir can be most, they can find most acceptable? It's, there are different ways. I've heard Rick say a couple times that this is a, there are new ways of dredging that will be least disturbing of the water while it's being done and achieve the level of cleanliness, if you will, of the removal of the cadmium from the surface, from the subsurface, which would actually, I think, be viable if, in fact, it's not completely cost prohibitive. I think that's what I think what we're searching for is what's the right way to get this done that everybody can live with.
And it seems like to me we have two goals going forward. One is to keep it open and not saying that it's a permanent solution, and then finding out what would be the solution.
Right.
The, and along those lines, I, you know, we were talking about having the meeting with Schneider. This really has to have two approaches brought to Schneider, two things. One is, we're not at a permanent solution. We don't feel that we're in a permanent solution. But we don't want to end up in a never-ending temporary solution either that there's no resolution to. And we need to have some type of resolution where we come together and all the stakeholders, as we were talking about before, and say, this is what makes sense. This is what will take care of the problem, just as you characterized it, that will, you know, put this thing to rest. And it may not be a regulatory process that we're really looking for. We may be really looking for, you know, the relationship between the town and Schneider as to how this is all going to get worked out.
What's the most practical solution?
For a practical solution, yes. So...
But I think the, I agree with what Rick said. I think it makes a lot of sense, but I also think that leverage is important. And the leverage that exists right now is the MCP. And I think that if the permanent solution were to be finalized, then I think a substantial piece of leverage that, you know, goes away. So, I think there, I understand, I understand, notwithstanding what Rick said.
No, no, I totally agree that we've got to keep it out of, it has to be rejected as a permanent solution, for sure, because the MCP's process then keeps it open for final resolution or how it should be dealt with. But how it's going to be finally dealt with, at least our dialogue with the state, they have not really supported that a lot has to be done about it. So, they don't live here. They don't have to look at it or deal with it, so it doesn't seem to be much of their problem, which that shouldn't be the case. One of the things we are talking to, or I have been talking to, is a couple of companies that do dredging programs and to give me a list of what is the typical pre-engineering work that usually has to be done for a dredging project, so you would be able to correctly and more accurately calculate what would the dredging costs be. And because what was done in the Phase III was just arm-waving and just wild estimates. And at the time when that was coming out, we got numbers that were half of what Schneider did, and their consultant said, no, those numbers are the same number. And, you know, 50% less is, when you're talking about $100 million...
Yeah.
That's some real money.
It's real money.
So, I think I'm going to continue pursuing or trying to get some input from engineering design companies that do dredging, that may be able to help us out along those lines, that may bring more data to the table, so we know what we should be asking for...
Right.
Going forward.
But the first step is stopping the permanent solution.
Yes, definitely.
That's why we're all here.
Yeah, so I guess that's what we're looking for, as much ammunition as we can to stop that process.
To address that.
Okay. Understood.
Great.
So, with that being said, do we still need this on the agenda for September 6th?
Right. When we didn't know if you were going to make it tonight, we were going to push it to September 6th, so...
Unless you can come back by September 6th with some reports, updates?
I would, it's today, the 21st or so?
Yeah.
A little over two weeks.
Over two weeks, yeah, two weeks and two days.
I think I can do that.
Yeah.
Perhaps not in a final form for dismittal, but, you know, some bullets for discussion.
I mean, the board's next meeting is on the 18th, Paul.
I'm sorry?
The board's next meeting is on the 18th.
After that.
After that.
After that. So, just as an option, you know, because I still, that still gives us time to work this out.
But I think that kind of discussion, like, I feel like every time we talk about it, rather than read a report, that's, in my opinion, what really helps me...
Yeah.
Understand it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd rather, and don't get this wrong, I'd rather not have this on the agenda every other week to, like, kind of what you were just saying, to just discuss what we're going to do. I'd rather have some...
Action items.
Yeah. Something of substance that we can...
Well, Paul might, well, hopefully we'll have an action item, maybe.
I will, I will work to, I will work to get something to you, it was the 6th?
Yep.
Yes.
Thursday night.
Something, confirm my calendar too. But get something to you, you know, a couple of days ahead of time, you know, kind of a bullet, bullet point type of issues, issues that I see for you to think about. And, you know, we'll see where we are. It's hard for me to, hard for me to totally describe what that might look like at this point, but I think I can have something that's worth your time.
Okay. All right. Kate, you have anything to add, or...
No, just hi, Paul.
Hi.
So, since you've been engaged by the NRRC, feel free to submit it to them and get their comments if there's time for that, but the board doesn't expect you all to meet and review it and have comments by then. But you could give it simultaneously, whatever works.
Okay.
And then the board will have an opportunity to review it individually, and then when they come back, whether it's the 6th or the 18th, come back and discuss it, you know, keeping in mind that November 2nd is not that far away. And I think once they have that, the board will be able to determine whether it's time to have a meeting with DEP, and then perhaps after that with Schneider.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good.
Right.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
That was huge. Yeah, today.
I'm glad it worked out.
No traffic tickets, right?
No traffic tickets, no...
Yeah, we don't want people to think that you chose Plymouth over Foxborough.
Thank you all for your continued hard work.
It's all scheduling. And I...
A month. I just talked to my buddy today.
Until, a minute ago, when I put Foxborough in, the 6th was unoccupied, so I can commit to that.
Plug it in.
Thank you.
Thursday, Friday, the 6th.
All right. I think we covered everything.
Good luck. It was all right. Thank you.
Month is a month old. One, two, and...
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion?
Another one.
Mike, you want to stay around?
Yeah. John is 32 minutes.
All of us in favor? All right. Night, everybody.
Good night.
Hi, Kate.
Good night, Kate.
Yeah.